Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 18, 2024 meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I could ask everyone to please take a moment, shut off their cell phones or silence them. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by FCTV. If any member of the audience who is privately recording, if you'd be so kind as to come to the microphone, identify yourself.
Taylor Kuzetti with the Falmouth Zoning Board.
Thank you very much, Taylor. Welcome back. I'll start off the meeting by just introducing members of the board, starting at the audience's far left. Gerald Potamus, who is an associate member, Frank Duffy, who is a full voting member, Mark Fineran, who is a full voting member. My name is James Morse. I'm a full voting member. Suzanne Murphy, who is a full voting member. Scott Peterson, who is a full voting member, currently our vice chairman. Anthony Perucci, who is an associate member. We're also joined by Noreen Stockman, the zoning administrator, Ashley DeMello, our recording secretary, and attorney George Pucci, who is special counsel of ZBA on this particular project. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state's zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws and reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public to allow for a full and fair discussion of a project prior to closing a hearing process within 180 days and reaching a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representatives will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments can be directed only at a project. Can include questions to the applicant or the board, or an opinion in favor or opposition. Comments should be limited to two minutes. If the comments become repetitive, they may be limited in discretion of the chair. Any member of the public wishing to comment can come to the podium. Please be recognized by the chair. Come to the podium, state your name.
No comments tonight.
No. I'm getting there. I'm getting there.
Okay.
Come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, speaking to the microphone. It will not amplify your voice, but is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, if the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. Once a hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves, make a motion to approve or deny an application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of three members, simple majority is required for the approval of comprehensive permits. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed, as provided for in Master and Lot Chef to 40A and B. First up on this evening's agenda is public comment. This public comment is reserved for anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to make a public comment about something that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. We have one issue, one thing on tonight's agenda. It's a continuation of hearing 09323, Falmouth Southerly LLC, requesting a comprehensive permit to construct 300 units of rental apartments throughout five separate buildings, a clubhouse, and amenities. Subject property is located at 0 and 375 Sandwich Road. Just for the benefit of the audience, this hearing has been closed. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review a draft decision, excuse me, with a possible vote anticipated. So, I will ask the board, the purpose of the audience representatives, for the benefit of everyone in the audience, a draft decision was prepared through special counsel as well as the zoning administrator circulated to the board. Comments have been fed back to the zoning administrator and through special town council. And I know that a preliminary draft was circulated. Is everyone in possession of the updated red line copy?
Yes.
Has everyone had an opportunity to begin to review it? All right. So, we will start off by going through, I'll defer to the board how they would like to do this. I don't know if anyone has specific or major issues. My thought would be just merely go through on a page-to-page basis. If someone has specific things they need to discuss, we can either discuss them or do this perhaps like town meeting where we just indicate a hold and we can circle back to them.
Mr. Chair, could we, rather than going page by page, go paragraph by paragraph?
Of course.
Like procedures, history, that we'll cover.
Oh, yeah, no, that was, yeah. I'm not, I don't want to go line by line.
Oh, okay.
We'll be here till midnight. Merely just, yeah, go by bullet points. And just for the purpose of the record, too, the voting members on this application are Mr. Potamus, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Fineran, Mrs. Murphy, and myself. Those will be the five members who are voting on this particular application itself. Page one. Couple red line changes merely as to the applicant, number was corrected, couple typos. Is there anything that anyone has, needs to address on page one?
No.
Seeing none.
I had like something I, curious. We were asked to contribute potential conditions, which I did. And I don't see them, and sorry, I've been a little, I've injured myself. I've been a little busy and behind. I mean, I did read this and I read this, but I really don't see any of the conditions that I offered incorporated into any of this.
Oh, when we get to conditions, just let me know when we can address it at that point. Fair enough.
Well.
All right. So, no issues on page one. Couple red line, essentially procedural typos were corrected. Page two. Number two. Anyone have any issues concerning procedural history?
No.
I see there's no changes made until we get down to paragraph number six. There was about who participated, the hold or discussion needed on item number six. We had a red line correction on number 10, indicating language that the board utilized various.
Mr. Haverty.
Mr. Haverty, thank you. Any discussion on the change? Going to page three. We had some red line changes concerning location. Number 13.
That ends with a question.
Does.
We could probably answer it. Paragraph 13 is a question at the end.
Yeah.
I don't see any reason why we shouldn't mention it, but.
Doesn't hurt to put it in there.
That's fine. Yeah, I don't.
I mean, it doesn't say Meredith either, though. You know what I mean?
Could we say something, comments from neighbors on this street, such and such street?
So, we're looking at number 13.
Number 13. Right. 13.
So.
Oh, the budding parcel.
Yeah. So typically, what we include there are GIS-related items based on the town's various overlays. And then, I guess, the question about 45 Pitch Pine is that's essentially a separate parcel, and it was not part of this particular application, but it is an abutting parcel that the developer has control. So, the question was what you may want to express about that. That may not be the location where it belongs, because again, that paragraph is typically GIS layers.
Yeah, maybe we do just leave it out.
So, maybe that's something that we pull out of that paragraph, but you may want to include elsewhere.
I agree with that.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Anyone need any changes to 14, 15, 16, or 17? There are no red line corrections indicated. Number 18, red line correction, striking the word "road," putting in, making sure clarification of private driveway. Similar correction in the next page, driveway instead of road. Any additional changes that need to be made to 19, 20, or 21? Next bullet heading, under letters, email information from applicant and the representatives. Anyone see anything that was missing the next page and a half? Record is pretty well documented. Continuing on on page six, under plans submitted by applicant, applicant representative. Letters, referrals, emails from town departments. Again, I think the record is pretty well documented. Did they define any omissions or something that they thought was omitted? Omitted? Continuing on page 10, letters, emails from abutters and interested parties. Seven and a half pages. Continuing on page 17, under governing law, red line correction on paragraph number one. Capitals. Any other corrections? Any corrections on paragraph two, three, or four on page 17? Continuing on page 18, paragraph five.
Are we leaving in the parentheses, I'm assuming, for clarification?
Leaving in the what?
Parentheses, having originally offered to connect to Brick Kiln Road.
On paragraph five on page 18? I'm sorry, the first, number five, I should say.
Yeah.
Haven't got any findings of fact yet. So, going on to findings of fact, then.
Yes, sorry.
So, number five, then.
Can we just take off the "I believe" and put in the applicant originally?
Everyone all right with that?
Yeah.
And Jim, I just wanted to note one thing is, we were talking, you know, your pages before were a lot of, not boilerplate so much, but semi-boilerplate. And I just wanted to alert the board, you know, when you get into your findings of fact, that's when the rubber meets the road.
Yeah, that's.
So, you want to make strong, underlying findings of fact, those are going to support your.
We'll read these one by one for the audience, as well as just for the record.
But strong findings of fact will support your conditions as well as go over to the waivers section. So, I just wanted to note that.
All right. So, under findings of fact, number one, project is the largest residential development proposed in Falmouth's history and proposes, poses a number of questions and concerns over incompatibility with the existing neighborhood and townwide development patterns, as well as protection of natural resources and the environment. additions, corrections, or modifications?
Which one did you read?
Number one.
Number one, okay.
Two, the proposed size and scale of the project, including massive four-story buildings, do not relate to the size and scale of the single-family dwellings on proximate lots.
I had one comment to my own writing is, you know, I put the word "massive." I don't know if you feel, if you feel comfortable with that word, I'm fine with it. Obviously, I wrote it, but, you know, I wanted to point that out, but that's sort of more of a stylistic thing than anything that would be legally required. So, if you're comfortable with that wording.
Definitely comfortable.
Anyone want to give the source out and find a different adjective?
It's the biggest one ever in town, so.
It's true. Number three, the board credits the testimony of numerous area residents, including director abutters, who expressed concern and alarm over adverse effects the large development was likely to have on the quiet enjoyment of their principal residences in small-scale rural residential setting. Number four, in order to integrate into the existing development patterns, it is essential to have extra buffering from the project to its neighbors to mitigate visual and other Suzanne, I'm going to defer to you to make sure we get the change.
You go.
Let me know how you want number five to read.
Let me just read it. Number five, Sandwich Road is a high-volume, high-speed roadway presenting a safety hazard to pedestrians with no sidewalk at this section of Sandwich Road. It is also insufficient with no support safe bicycle travel. The applicant originally offered to connect to Brick Kiln, to Brick Kiln with a sidewalk. We need "with" in there.
Okay. Everyone all right with that modification?
Yes, a fact.
Number six, it is imperative that the applicant work with the town to identify and assist with mitigation measures to address the existing safety issues and traffic compounded by the proposal. The town engaged a peer traffic engineer to review and assist with mitigation. It finds the applicant's traffic volume study inadequate due to the time of year it was conducted.
That's a fact as well.
Seven.
I just wanted to note for board member Fineran, I, you know, no board member, and I should just be clear, single board member sent me some comments or proposed conditions they'd like in the order, attorney-client. I tried to compile the best first draft I could, but nobody should feel insulted if they don't see something particular that they put in. I tried to give you a cogent draft, you know, to, for discussion purposes, so it could move it along. But I expected if somebody sees something glaringly omitted, they'll speak up. But I wanted to note on that one, I did try to sprinkle in, Mr. Fineran, some of your comments here and there. So, if you're not satisfied with it, I fully expected you would weigh in during the process. But that particular issue I noted specifically because Mr. Fineran had been talking about it during the hearing.
I think that anybody who, any of the abutters agree and anybody who travels Sandwich Road should and does appreciate the impact of this. It's dangerous enough as it is, and I mean, for the applicant to dangle that carrot on the stick in front of us and then pull it away and substitute it with $40,000 is wholly inadequate.
Are you satisfied with the language in number six?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I wish it was a little stronger, but it does.
Number seven, project is cited.
Five.
That was number six. I'm sorry, that was number six. It is imperative that the applicant work with the town to identify and assist with mitigation members, members, excuse me, measures to address the existing safety issues and traffic compounded by the proposal. The town engaged a peer traffic engineer to review and assist with mitigation, but finds that the applicant's traffic volume study inadequate due to the time of year it was conducted. That was number six. Any additional changes?
No.
Number seven, the project is sited in the lower Kuminesseid sub watershed within the Great Pond embayment, a highly impaired system with a defined total maximum daily load, TMDL, for nitrogen loading reductions. The existing, number eight, has been struck. At this point.
I guess the question is, why was it struck?
Noreen struck that.
Oh, I just incorporated the overlays into the other section where we had.
I saw it in the other section. I just wanted to.
Yeah, so it didn't really go away. We just relocated.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
So, I should note, too, I agreed with all of Noreen's.
And.
No, I really did, though. Not to say it.
We believe you.
Number eight, the state approved the town's Great Pond targeted watershed management plan, which includes expansion of the town sewer collection system, improvements to the town's wastewater treatment facility, additional recharge beds, and additional nitrogen removal options. The TWMP does not envision or account for any additional nitrogen load into the Great Pond watershed. Accordingly, although proposed private wastewater system is subject to state permitting, the board finds that it is within its jurisdiction as a matter of local concern to impose a net-zero nitrogen discharge standard on the project so as to ensure that the project does not force the town into noncompliance with the applicable state or federal requirements. Note one red line, just capitalizing state. Are there additional comments or concerns?
No.
I just have a comment to raise to the board, because I don't want you to be surprised. That might result in an appeal. You know, singly or in combination with other things, that's going to be an issue, you know, whether that's, I mean, this is just a finding at this point, but there are other conditions that are based on this finding. So, on that particular topic, the applicant may end up having a problem with that and appealing that it's beyond your jurisdiction. You know, my opinion, I drafted this, I think it's a matter of local concern, especially based on your other town approvals, you know, not to put you into an enforcement situation. So, I do think it is qualified as a matter of local concern, even though it will be subject to mass DEP permitting. So, you know, if you're comfortable with the way it's drafted, I'm comfortable defending it, but I just wanted to give you a heads up.
No.
It's truly. It's 100% truth. Absolutely.
No, what the issue is, though, is a jurisdictional issue. Is that the applicant will, you know, and this wouldn't be the first applicant to do this, is to claim that, you know, anything subject to state permitting is not within your province. So, they're likely to argue that with regard to this. So, I just wanted to give you the heads up on that.
I understand that, but the statement itself is true.
Yeah. To not include it would have been completely incorrect.
Right.
So, under the umbrella of public health and safety is where we were.
Well, it also, it has, you can get into public health and safety, but you really have to have something grounded in a local regulation or, you know, and I think you have enough there with these other, you know, if we talk about the TWMP.
Right.
You have local issues that you're, you can point to, you know, to justify it beyond a state permitting requirement. So, that's where I, you know, I think you're within your bounds to do it. You know, and like I say, I'm not arguing with you. I wrote it in there. I just want to give you the heads up.
Very good.
Continuing on to the new number nine, the eastern portion of the site contains the most ecologically valuable land due to the intact natural forest proximity to Kuminesseid River and bordering wetlands. The town and state have invested over $8 million to improve the Kuminesseid River area. Limiting development in the easterly portion of the lot would be most productive, most protective of the most sensitive natural resources. The existing older growth forest also provides valuable carbon sequestration in the trees and soil.
I would propose to add to that at this point, the 45 Pitch Pine parcel. So, what I was proposing was to add on to the end of that, the applicant also has control over 45 Pitch Pine, an approximate 15-acre lot, which parcel abuts the subject property and was formerly a sandpit. This lot was not part of the proposal per the applicant.
Did you repeat that slowly? I think I got the gist of it, but this is going to be.
Sure. It's a good thing I have it written out. Okay. The applicant also has control over 45 Pitch Pine, an approximate 15-acre lot, which parcel abuts the subject property and was formerly a sandpit. This lot was not part of the proposal per the applicant. I don't know if you want to add something further, but I think.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it.
No problem here.
New paragraph, number 10, the length of the proposed driveway exceeds the town's limit for a dead-end roadway, but can be mitigated as the driveway otherwise meets the requirements of the town subdivision regulations for construction of a roadway serving a 300-unit development, including sidewalks. The town recommends that the driveway be constructed to town standards due to the anticipated volume for safety and for safety purposes.
Do we write the length of the road that the applicant's requesting and what the town's normal length is?
So, there's a differentiation here where the applicant has expressed that this is a private driveway. So, that is different from a road.
Okay.
And so, there are not town standards related to a private driveway.
The lengths of driveway.
So, there's some of a crossover here, though, in that the town is anticipating, based on the expected volume, that they would like it to be built to a higher standard due to the use. And I'm sure the applicant is going to want to make sure that their road doesn't disintegrate in some short period of time, but, yeah, so.
Okay. I got you.
Anyone else? Paragraph 11, the property is transected by a 100-foot-wide power line easement which runs through the two sections of the total area, the westerly portion of 375 Sandwich Road, and the northwest portion of Pitch Pine, not currently proposed for development. There is a right to pass through the easement area, but which area cannot be developed.
I can ask, George, my question is, do we put it in conditions that nothing can go on the easement? Like, no structure can go on the easement?
What does the easement terms just stick in?
Yeah, I mean, the easement would really govern it.
So, what I'll just express with the board is, we had a private, prior 40B where there was a similar circumstance, and the power line company has total control over the easement, and they will not allow structures. So, regardless of what you voted or what somebody wanted to do, they won't allow it. They will allow a roadway to pass through. You can get permission to lay pipes and that type of thing, but you cannot build any structures within.
So, we're just going to rely on new Bedford light to do that?
I mean, you're not really doing that. Your, your conditions of approval go to the "approved plans," quote unquote. So, you know, the final plans, when they go for final review, are going to have to conform with your approved plans. It shows a structure in the easement area, and it obviously doesn't conform with the approved plans. So, that's, that's the way I would handle it, as opposed to trying to do things, you know, that affect those easement rights.
Okay.
And consequently, if they came in afterwards, it'd have to be a modification.
Correct. Yeah.
Everyone satisfied as to number 11?
Yes.
Decision, we'll come back to. Conditions, general conditions, paragraph one, pending approval. The decision approves with conditions, the plans specific to Plan B design referenced above on page seven, which shall constitute the approved plans as referred to in the decision. If the applicant reverts to so-called Plan A on appeal, the board's decision on the approval plan shall constitute action of the so-called Plan A plans, so that the applicant shall have the additional burden of proving the conditions of approval render the project uneconomic as defined in the comprehensive permit regulations. Two, the construction shall be substantially as shown on the approved plans with final review procedures defined below.
I have a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
If we do that. We always have trouble with the term substantially, because it's not really defined anyplace. So, what is, the plans are not, they're just renderings. They have some minor measurements on it, such as height, but we don't know what building materials will be used to finish it. So, what does, how do we use substantially to make sure that these plans are built the way they've depicted them?
Yeah, there's a degree of discretion to it. I mean, the first place it's going to come from is the building inspector. It's he, he's going to be, he or she is going to be looking at this issue. They're going to come in with the final plans. They're going to go back to what the approval is, and if the building commissioner notes issues that they don't think is in substantial conformance, they'll send it to the board. So, I can't do better for you than substantially, but, you know, I'm open to suggestions.
Well.
You know, unfortunately, I got to say, as part of the 40B process, it's frustrating. And you're not the first board member I've heard this from. And in fact, usually the ones that get more excised about this issue would be like architects. And they look at it and they're like, this is a cocktail napkin sketch. But the procedure does call for preliminary plans. They're not made to have to spend the money to get plans more formal.
May I ask a question further than that?
Certainly.
I mean, should we be, should we have asked for specifics?
You can only do so much. They're, they're entitled to give you preliminary plans.
They may be entitled to.
They have to be stamped.
But we're entitled to ask questions.
Correct.
All right. That we did, that we did not ask, evidently, because we were sure we could, I guess.
I, excuse me, I think we did ask, and the applicant came back and said almost what our attorney said, you know, we don't have to give specific design, quoted the specific sections, which I can't remember, that said that they were well within the jurisdiction of what is required, not what we want, but what is required.
So, essentially, this is how the game is played, and we are basically depending on our building commissioner to be in our stead.
But the building commissioner does not have any guidance on this, other than substantially. And substantially means absolutely nothing in this particular case. But I don't want to beat a dead horse on this whole thing. If this is the best we can get, then this is the best we can get.
I mean, it's about as good as you can get. It calls for a process that has preliminary plans only. And that doesn't mean that the applicant just come up with anything. They have to be prepared by an engineer or an architect. But before you, you ask questions about it, you can get to a certain level of detail on it. But if you get to the point where you're. you're requiring plans that typically would, would be the basis for a building permit application, you're, you're beyond your bounds.
So it's there...
You know, and, and I have to emphasize too, you know, you can play the game about doing things purposely beyond your jurisdiction and take your chances on appeal. The problem with that type of thing is then the Housing Appeals Committee ends up being the town's permitting authority, because they won't remand it to you. They will issue a boilerplate project that basically gives the applicant everything they want, and it will be subject to state and federal requirements, and issue it within 30 days, or this will serve as the permit. And then the problem with that from there is unless they do something glaring and error of law, they are most likely to be upheld on appeal, on a State Administrative Procedures Act appeal, because there's a wide range of discretionary authority for HAC. So that that's where the danger comes in, is you end up having them be your permitting authority if you go well beyond your jurisdiction. And that's why, you know, sometimes board members have to hold their nose and go by preliminary plans and ask as much detail as you can, so that then it is a matter of the building inspector looking at it as a checklist.
So the next, the next time that we push back on something like this in the applicant's attorney or anybody says, well, we don't have to give you that, then maybe we need to just say, no, you, you have to tell us what you're thinking about at least, and give us a range of materials, for instance, that you might use.
Yeah, I mean, you can suppose, they responded to your questions.
Yes.
Within the bounds of 40B. I mean, you can put in more detail if you want. If you have a particular, you know, building material you want to see incorporated into the project, you can put it in the conditions.
And then take the chances.
But, right. But they, they have provided a sufficient level of detail, in my opinion. I'm not saying that it, you're obligated to approve it or deny it, but they have provided a, a sufficient level of detail in the 40B process before a board.
I think the problem we have is the time. They gave it to us a month before. Normally you have the six months to review and ask questions. This is one month.
Yes.
That's where I think we run into, we didn't have enough time to ask questions.
And you know, it, it got a little contentious at times during the hearing process about a give and take. But essentially, the applicant did do some give and take with you. Yes, it was late in the game, but as a result of comments that were received and questions by the board members, they did, you know, substantially alter the plan and bring it back to you. You asked questions on that, and then they provided another level of detail on those set of preliminary plans.
And then it was over.
And then it was over, yes. But, so that's where you're at.
Would there be any value to you adding a clarifier to the, to the end of that period where, what's your definition of substantially is? Is there any way of locking down some additional color through the testimony that was happened during the meetings?
Mr. Chairman, it might be answered that question.
You could, yeah.
Could we use the word consistent rather than substantially? And maybe there's no legal difference, difference.
I think we're banging our heads unnecessarily. Substantial is as good as it's going to get on this. So let's move on. Unless, you've been waiting patiently. Do you have a question?
I mean, think about the hypotheticals that could come up. They, they give an extra building. They make it five stories, you know.
I think that...
They're glaring ones, but, you know, those are kind of the ridiculous examples. But that's the type of thing the building inspector's looking at. He's looking at, okay, here are the preliminary plans, and here's what I would require for a building permit, and I need this sufficient level of detail that's consistent with that.
So let me just, may I just sum up something? So we're going to depend on the building inspector to determine whether this is hardy board, a hardy plank, or natural material. Because we can't put anything in that says it has to be this, or it has to be this. It's either, it's up to him to decide if it's a hardy plank or a natural material.
No, no. You can add further detail to the approved plans. In other words, the approved plans is this set of plans together with these additional conditions. You can do that easily if you know what type of, I don't know what your local conditions are for building material. But if you, if in Falmouth, on your local expertise, you, you like particular building materials over another, put it in as a condition, for sure. And then that's part of the building inspector's checklist. If they come up with vinyl siding, and you put in whatever it is that you...
No vinyl siding should be used. But in all seriousness, these things happen, Mr. Chairman, in all seriousness, these things happen.
Yeah.
But can we at least know that we're not going to allow vinyl siding on this?
Yeah, you could add whatever. I mean, you want to think about, like, your community, what types of things have been a problem in the past, or what types of building materials you like used in Falmouth.
Mr. Chairman, then...
You know, one man's vinyl siding may be another community's.
No, no, you said something very important. I'm sorry, because I know you want to move on. This community uses, and they won't like this, but this community uses natural materials. They use white cedar shingles, red cedar shingles. So maybe we need to put that in. They will never do that on something as vast, what was the term you used for the side?
Massive.
Massive, as this building. They will go towards hardy plank, hardy board and all that. But can we at least say that there, that there is no vinyl siding?
Yes, absolutely.
Do we have, Mr. Chairman, and again, this is just back and forth, do we have the expertise or the reason? You mentioned some things. I don't know where they are in our code, that we can prohibit vinyl siding for aesthetics or, you know, historical.
Actually, it's, when you get to this size of a structure, it's also a safety issue. Ask any firefighter. They don't want to touch a house that's got more than two stories of vinyl siding because the stuff melts, and it's, it's a serious danger. I mean, I don't think throwing that in is, is a bad thing at all. I think our real concern is for larger structural changes, but I, I think that that's, personally, I, I think that that's quite appropriate to, to put that in. For other reasons as well. I mean, it's not that appealing, but it's a safety issue. I mean, it's, it's really dangerous once you get over a couple of stories, because that stuff melts and, you know, it's, it's dangerous.
Are we doing this by amendment?
Yes.
Then I would vote to amend the condition to private vinyl siding.
Very good, Frank. I'll second that.
I mean, is that it? That you're, that's all you're saying? It can't be vinyl siding or...
We don't have a code that dictates what type of siding you want. Most of these folks will use something with a cement board, like a hardy plank, because it is the most expeditious and expensive, and the care is almost nothing. Makes sense.
I think, too, the other part of the problem is that the town doesn't have...
A group that's specifically doing design review.
Such that they are making recommendations, and nor do you specifically ask. So maybe for the future, it's something to think about, right, in the process.
I mean, this is our last bite of the apple, so we're trying to make sure we ensure...
I'm not adverse to Frank's amendment at all. And as far as the rest, I mean, it's throwing a dart or whatever. And I, for one, have confident in our, confidence in our building department, if there is something.
Absolutely.
I, I think they're as well set up and professional as we've had in quite some time. And, you know, I think we're going to have to live with that part of it.
Clarification, if we put in no vinyl siding, and then higher authority doesn't like it, they'd just scratch that requirement out.
Yeah, but it doesn't go that way. If it's part of, if it's part of an appeal, what happens with, with developers is if they file the appeal with the HAC, all bets are off, so they appeal everything.
Okay.
And then, and then what happens is, HAC basically strikes everything.
Ouch.
And, and they do that boilerplate permit that I referenced. So I, so, I mean, unfortunately, this is the first time I'm hearing anything about a concern for the architectural plans about the material. But you're certainly within your bounds to further condition the approved plans, and the approved plans that consist of the architectural plans to add further detail. We don't want, you know, it shall be of a suitable material, you know, with no vinyl siding or similar materials. You know, I, I don't know how you do it, because I don't know what your local building customs and procedures are. You know, what, how, what other materials do you use around town on building projects?
Could they just request that prior to pulling a building permit, that those elements are provided to the board?
Yeah, but...
Such a minor issue, though. I mean, who's going to appeal on that? And, and I think it's, like I said, for, for safety alone. I, I know from, you know, living in the city that firefighters hate the stuff, and it's, it's dangerous.
Yeah. I, I mean, again, I have no problem with the additional condition. I'm just saying, are you satisfied with that additional, that you're limited to that? Are you...
I would love, I would love, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, for safety reasons.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't, I'm, I'm not saying you need to justify it. I'm saying, is that enough? That you're just saying exterior building materials shall not be vinyl or...
Do you want to know if we have any other construction issues?
Oh, we can circle back to it, too, can't we? I mean, we... I mean...
Actually, I think the vinyl, I don't think it really matters whether it's vinyl or not vinyl. I think building codes, state building codes, all sorts of other codes may dictate what a four-story building can be made on.
Well, you see a lot of vinyl or composite.
What's the expertise of the board to dictate vinyl siding?
I mean, why don't you just say that then, if you want, no vinyl siding or similar materials?
Why not? It's a smart detail. They're not going to appeal on that. I wouldn't beg.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying, are you going far enough? I, I just don't know what your typical materials are that you're used to on construction projects here. You approve other projects. Do, what do you do on others? Are you thinking about the, the building material?
We've never had skyscrapers before.
Yeah.
This is our first time.
Could we move the question?
So there's an, there's a motion to amend, to addition the prohibition of vinyl siding that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That is amended. Number three, "Where this comprehensive permit is granted specifically under general laws, chapter 40B, sections 20 to 23, allowing the override of local zoning, parentheses, density, there shall be no as-of-right changes made on the subject property. Any changes requested shall be submitted to the board for a determination of substantial, substantiality pursuant to 760 CMR 56.051. It shall thereafter be governed under the procedures set forth therein. Each condition in this decision shall run with the land and shall be in accordance with its terms, the applicable to and binding on the applicant and the applicant's successors assigned." Any questions, concerns? No. Number four, "Basement space may not be used as bedroom space, nor may studies, offices, bonus rooms, or family rooms be converted to bedroom space. Noncompliance of this condition shall be considered a violation of the comprehensive permit." You have a concern?
No, no, no. I had a question, but I answered it myself.
Number five, "There shall be no further accessory structures on the premises, including sheds, absent prior authorization by the zoning administrator or board." Number six, "Parking or storage of any unregistered vehicle, boat, recreational vehicle, or trailers on the premises is strictly prohibited."
Can I back, back up?
Yes.
It was just further, when we say no further structures, would that include a generator for the entire complex?
That's in the plans. It's in the plans, yeah.
I don't think there's anything in the plan, but okay.
There is. No, there is. Testimony, that's, yeah, that's there.
Okay.
Number seven, "All stormwater, stormwater runoff shall be directed to recharge within the premises to be approved by the town's peer engineer, peer review engineer."
You know, that one I would think about changing to, because it, you don't want to have it as like a subsequent approval, but I would just say maybe reviewed for consistency with the decision. Instead of to be approved by the town's peer review engineer, it's sort of implying a subsequent approval process, which is not really permitted. So maybe just reviewed for consistency with the decision.
Well, maybe we can just take seven out totally, because we've got, we could take seven out totally, because we've got it buttoned up in a few other areas, unless we're only even in there.
Okay. If you, all right.
Yeah, whatever you want, you know.
But if we take it out, what does, what, what does that do to us? I mean, they have to comply with the general permit anyways.
How about just take out the "to be approved" by the town's peer engineer?
Yeah.
Just leave it as that.
That's good.
Strident of a condition.
Yeah.
So you just want to strike after the word, so, so just going to read, "All stormwater runoff shall be directed to recharge within the premises?"
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, why not? Just change that to a period and leave the rest. Pretty straightforward.
Good idea. Any objection to that?
Nope.
We'll do it by unanimous consent. Number eight, "Irrigation shall be sourced by roof water runoff and not by groundwater."
I have a question. The inference is, well, directly it says, it shall be sourced by roof water runoff, but then it goes further to say, and not by groundwater. Well, should we, since it's added that says not by groundwater, should we be adding no municipal water services?
Yeah, definitely.
Well, I had the question about that, is what...
Yeah, when the initial, initial planting and growing, I mean, there should be a time period after one year or something like that, because they're definitely going to need to, especially if you go through a dry spell, they're going to need to supplement until the, the plants are established.
Yeah, but just issue by issue, the first one I was confused about is, because this came up during the hearing. Are we saying not by groundwater or not by town water?
Town water.
It's town water, right?
Town water.
Town water, I think.
Right.
And then, I'm, I'm sorry, mark it. Then you had a further, so irrigation shall be sourced by roof water runoff and not by town water.
Yeah, but I mean, I still think that they may need to supplement with town water until the planting is established, so we need to put a timeframe in there.
We talked about two growing seasons later on in the permit, so I think that would be...
It should be in this, then, would you not say?
Right. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, because I, I know, I mean, yeah, plants are expensive. And I mean, why should they buy something twice? I mean, and why should the people be deprived of, you know, so I mean, with it, yeah, two growing seasons. That, that just needs to be added in and to be fine.
George, George, just use the language that you already used for landscape.
Water is a different issue. I, I mean, that's kind of...
No, but you, you said that it must be maintained and just use the same kind of language for one year.
Yeah, no, but it's a different issue. It's not, is they're obligated to do that for those growing seasons, but they're, we're not allowing them to use town water to do it.
Well, they could supplement with town water for the first two growing seasons, or some kind of verbiage that allows that.
For two years, irrigation shall be...
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. Because I mean, why...
It's meter usage, so that's okay.
Yeah.
They could water truck it.
All right. But for the first two growing seasons, are you saying?
Or two years.
Two years.
Two years even.
Two growing seasons.
By handcuff of, I mean, come on.
I don't want to add a layer to this, but I'm going to. First two growing, these are five buildings.
Yeah.
They may do one, and they may not do the rest for another year. So it goes well beyond two years. So somewhere in this, it has to talk about when all of this is planted, or maybe it doesn't, I don't know. But this is where it gets complicated. I don't mean to add a layer to it, but you're right, though.
Well, doesn't, doesn't it, when the thing's planted, that's when it starts?
Right.
I mean, if they're going to develop a building, they're going to develop the planting around it.
But for the first two growing seasons of new plantings.
Until it's done.
Or of new plantings.
Right.
Yeah, upon issuance of...
And if there's no occupancy permit, they have, to get the occupancy permit, and they haven't done it, they have to post a bond. So that's all covered later on.
We, you know, we could put until occupancy permit on the...
Maybe we could circle back to this in case it's not covered.
You don't have to. It just says, "But for the first two growing seasons of new plantings."
Okay.
Just giving them a...
Keep it simple.
But for, did you repeat that again?
Two years.
Irrigation shall be sourced by roof water runoff and not by town water, comma, "but for the first two growing seasons of new plantings."
Because they probably lose 10% as it is, or, you know, I mean, it can be substantial sometimes. So, I mean, they should have the right to supplement and get this stuff established for everyone's benefit.
Want to add a layer of protection? Extension may be granted by the zoning administrator for cause?
All right, if we have a drought.
I don't want to, I agree with you.
Only in consultation with the water super.
Of course.
Yes.
That's more than fair.
Yeah, he's a... I put anything in his hands.
You have a water superintendent?
Yes.
So I, then maybe just add a comma, but, "new plantings, comma, subject to review by the water superintendent."
Yeah, that's good.
Good.
Number nine, "Maintenance and repair of dry wells, subsurface leaching systems, detention basins, the private driveway, as well as snow plowing and trash removal shall remain private and shall be the responsibility of the property owner."
Also recycling. Also recycling. Can we throw recycling in there?
Sure.
Right after our trash removal and recycling.
Yeah.
And recycling, comma, shall be, shall remain.
Number 10. The maximum height of...
Do we want to put that under the purview of our solid waste manager that we have full-time now?
You can't.
It's on the applicant.
Pardon me?
It's a private development. You can't have it be under the town oversight.
Well, who's going to oversee it?
The applicant.
What if they decide not to recycle at all?
It's up to them.
They're paying the throats, their purview.
Well, it would be a violation of the permit if anybody came back to us, wouldn't it?
Well, if we put recycling in there, I suppose it would be, but...
No, because they could say, "Yeah, I'm in charge of it, and I'm not doing it." I mean, you're not putting in a condition about recycling requirements. I can't imagine how you would.
Well, everybody else has to abide by...
My daughter tells me that it's meaningless. I separate all our trash, the plastic and the cans, and she tells me, "Who's our end there? There's no reason to do it." So, they might say that, but if it's private, I don't see how you could put conditions on it.
The applicant did say that we're going to do recycling.
Yeah.
I think, actually, they can put conditions on the private haulers who operate within the town. As a matter of fact, isn't that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So, we don't have to put anything in, because it's already inferred with their permit or part of...
They can't collect in the town of Falmouth, I don't think, without offering recycling.
Without offering, yeah. Okay, so it...
I mean, that's what I'm saying. It's either private or it's going to be subject to the, it's going to be...
Well, the private haulers are subject to our, they don't get licensed. Scott would know better than anyone on that.
I'm just saying, the point of the condition is that this is all going to be private. It's not the town responsible.
Just want recycling, but no problem.
But the town does oversee the private haulers anyhow, so it's kind of much of a muchness.
Number 10. The maximum height of the dwellings shall be, as shown on the approved plans and as specified in the decision on applicant's waiver requests stated in the below waiver section of the decision.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Approved plans, the definition of approved plans is what? Are they, are these plans we have in front of us, are they the approved plans? Will they be recorded at the registry of deeds and be stamped "approved plans" by the board?
They're identified on the document. It's in the page seven. So, you have to be comfortable about the document.
Well, first of all, it should say all buildings.
Before you get to that...
Sorry.
Plans specific to Plan B design are on page seven, and those are the approved plans. So, you have to be comfortable about the plans that are listed on this are your approved plans. You know what I'm saying?
I have to be comfortable?
Yes. Otherwise, you cannot...
You should be. What, Mr. Chairman, just an hypothetical. What if everybody dropped dead on this board, and nobody apart of this knew anything about this, other than the audience? Registry of deeds is where everybody goes to find out what's been approved, so therefore this decision is recorded there. They have to record that there.
Yeah.
And then they have to go to the town hall, I think the town clerk's office, where these plans will be recorded with the decision?
They have to match up with what you, that's why you've listed them specifically.
Right.
Plan C 102, A 105. If you're, that's what I mean, I'm not being facetious. If you're not comfortable for the level of detail that's where they're identified...
This says site plan, but it has no page, it has page three of what? We've been handed so many different versions of plans.
The site plan on this.
Oh.
Layout, grading, lighting, landscape.
They supplemented the plan after that.
Main building, right.
You have better, further developed plans. That's a presentation.
That's a concept design.
Yeah, that's a presentation page.
That's what I'm saying.
That's not the page that we're referring to as final plans.
To satisfy yourself, you have to look at this list and say, "Well, we're C 10. I haven't seen that." I mean, let's real, I mean, this is really very important. You raise a good point, because what happens is, it doesn't so much have to do with recording, because the decision will be recorded in the registry of deeds, and the conditions are here, but what this decision is meant to do is to lay out a checklist, just like you're saying. If in five years, somebody doesn't know what was permitted, what plans? They have to look at this document, plans specific to Plan B design. Those are identified as the term of our, of the defined term, approved plans. So, you have to look at them, you know, I mean, just go through them. It was drawn by Ellen and Major, the main building, the architecture by Smoak, with the dates on the A 4-5 and C 104, C 106.
May I, just, when it comes to this site plan, which is site plan B, can you just point out where that is at?
Yeah, so that plan is not the plan referenced.
But it's the rep, that's what this board has.
This is what we have, yeah.
That's what we have.
We have further fleshed plans that show dimensions, et cetera, on them.
The plans stamped and signed by Phil Cordero.
Yeah.
So...
So, that was shown to you as part of a...
Just a demonstration.
Correct. And they have further fleshed out those plans.
So, the zoning administrator is satisfied with these, then?
Not those.
Not those.
No, 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 with your office.
With the correct plans that show dimensions, yeah.
I'm going to add my questions.
Going on, too, there's plot plans that then have to be submitted. There are architectural plans that have to be submitted to get a building permit, so there's other layers of protection included in the decision as well later on.
No, but what the point is, is that the latest level of detail that they gave for Plan B, staff set them out on this, plans specific to Plan B design, and you're defining them per my draft as those of the approved plans, the capital A and a capital P. So, you have to make sure that list is exhaustive of what you're approving. Then later, the building inspector, subject to your further review, if he or she decides it needs to go back before you, is going to decide whether those final plans that are being submitted for building permit conform with those approved plans. So, if you're uncomfortable, if you think a plan is missing...
Yeah.
You need to identify that and put it in here.
Yeah.
And then the other issue was...
I need to know the date of the one we're using.
You added more conditions, like about the vinyl siding, to the approved plans, because here you have the architect's plan, and you're adding that additional condition to the approved plans. So, the inspector is going to look and say, "Okay, is it in conformance with the architectural plans, and what's the building material?"
We do.
Well, then, I think we need to ask our zoning administrator if she has everything that is in this decision.
We don't. I don't.
So, these plans that are referenced are posted electronically on the webpage, so they're available to everyone.
So, we would have handed them, though?
You would have had a copy, I believe. And we have a full-size set in the office, and we also have them posted on the webpage so that the board has accessibility to all the plans all the time, so that you don't have to maintain multiple paper copies of the same thing.
When they presented the Plan B concept, they did it with a sketch.
First, we had a third grade one.
Then Phil Cordero provided...
This one.
A subsequent, more detailed plans that came by link to the zoning administrator. You definitely had them.
This was the second one we got.
I don't know. Whatever was on the link was some more detailed plans.
But it doesn't have detail on it.
What detail will we be missing?
So, height, height on the buildings?
These were essentially concept designs that were handed to us at the particular...
No, no. After that, they provided more detailed plans.
What she's referencing essentially is a concept design plan that was given to us at the meeting.
Right.
I'm very much aware of the actual detailed plans electronically that are online electronically.
It was days after.
Yeah. That's right.
I think the point is, it's been available online to us and to the public, and if this is the best listing that, I guess, Norrie has put together, and I have trust that we aren't missing anything, anything substantial or anything, because they're obligated for these...
Yeah, I mean, that's why you have deliberations. If you think that this is incomplete, let's complete it while your deliberations are still open. It'll add to it, but, you know...
Well, we'd have to put the meeting on hold and then get, go online and take a look.
Well, no. What we can do is, we can go through these in the office and double-check that all the dates and the numbers are all properly referenced. We can just review it again.
But you need to look at them. I mean, I can't...
I thought I was using the one.
I thought, I assumed the board members had looked at the more detailed plans that came in.
I had not.
This is the only thing I thought we were looking at.
I had, too.
My practice is always to watch full-size plans in the office or view them electronically from my office during my lunch hour or so on. I don't know what the rest of the board does.
I agree, and sometimes the plans online, a little bit more difficult to read for the full plan, and you see it a little on your screen.
We can put them up on the screen here, if you...
Now?
Yeah.
All right. I want to circle back to this issue about what's in the file of the plans, because we're coming up on an hour, and we have about 20 more pages of conditions that we need to start reviewing. So, it also gives Ashley some time to pull up the particular plans.
Good.
So, table number 10, number 11. Development shall be limited to a maximum of five buildings with a maximum of 463 total bedrooms. 167 units shall be one-bedroom, 125 market, 42 affordable. 103 units shall be two-bedroom, 77 market, 26 affordable. 30 units shall be three-bedroom, 23 market, 7 affordable. 12 of the units shall be HP accessible, 10 market, 2 affordable. Any increase in the number of the bedrooms is a violation of the zoning bylaw and is comprehensive permit.
On this one, I don't know that this was right.
This is not right.
There are factual errors, and I advise Mr. Pujia, just to help you, and I know I'm not, I'm not on it, but please, you're...
I have problems with this.
Yeah.
It's wrong.
I had...
That's Plan A is for that one.
Right. So, I corrected it, because you noticed it, too, it says in...
Right. There's seven buildings total now.
It's a mix of, so it should read, "The development shall be limited to a maximum of five buildings with a mix of approximately 175 one-bedroom, 95 two-bedroom, and 33-bedroom units with a maximum of 363 total bedrooms."
463.
463.
What did I say?
He said 363.
Forty and slip, 463.
And do we put the other buildings in there, too?
And then the rest is correct. 12 of the units HP accessible by, you know, increase shall be a violation, blah, blah, blah.
Can you just read it?
How come?
So, it's, "The development shall be limited to a maximum of five buildings with a mix of approximately 175 one-bedroom, 95 two-bedroom, and 33-bedroom units with a maximum of 463 total bedrooms."
Should we say residential buildings, because you do have a couple of...
Yeah. That's where I'm having a hard time, right.
What did he say?
Residential buildings.
There's seven buildings total.
How come, how come the affordable handicap units isn't three to be the 25%? That seems an error.
Isn't that a different subsection of the, or is that...
Right. 12.
Well, why wouldn't we want the handicaps to be 25% of the total? It's not like, people with money are more likely to be handicapped than, it seems to fly in the face of all reason.
This was what was proposed. You hadn't raised an issue about it before, so what do you want it to be?
Well, should it be 25% of the total, 12, which would be three, instead of two? I mean, it seems we're shorting handicap units for affordable.
Nine market, three affordable.
Yes, exactly. That's...
I mean, how could it not be that?
No, that's right.
That's just, that seems rather glaring to me.
Yeah, no, I...
By support, you know.
Sounds good. That's what I, I change it.
Okay.
Any additional revisions?
And then there's a question at the bottom. Do we include the clubhouse with the wastewater in that other storage building?
So, I think we've addressed the issue. I mean, clearly, it's five residential buildings.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Why should there be five residential, one clubhouse, one wastewater, just a...
I mean, we're going from five buildings in Plan A to seven buildings in Plan B.
Well, the rest were always in, oh, actually, you're correct, because the clubhouse was originally part of the...
It was in a building.
Yeah.
Which I wonder what's going in that spot right now.
And the wastewater was...
So, we're just going to take out that question and not address it? The wastewater treatment building? Just eliminate that from...
Well, it's somewhere...
I mean, it talks about the wastewater treatment building later.
Someplace else. Okay. So, we're just going to eliminate that from that paragraph?
I mean, I don't think anybody's going to read this paragraph to say that they can't build the wastewater treatment.
No, no, no. I just answered the question. Go ahead, Jim. We're on a roll.
Number 12. Development proposes an estimated sewer, I should see sewer, just, estimated sewer flow, I was going to say wastewater.
Yeah. Couldn't even say it without saying it right.
It's one of those, suddenly, it was like, wait a minute. So, we'll change it to, "The development proposes an estimated wastewater flow of 51,605 gallons per day, subject to a mass DEP review and approval."
And do we want to put in there where it comes back to the board, or...
It comes back to the board.
That's good.
We approve plan.
So later on, I think we do discuss the actual building itself, deciding that there's, yeah.
And the approval.
Shouldn't the review be stuck in there or no? Mention of it for consistency?
I think the more places you mention it, the more place chances you have inconsistent interpretation.
Then it becomes inconsistent and you're trying to figure out why you said it three times. Are they different things?
The one question I had on 12 was, do, I think the flow is the annual average wastewater flow.
I don't think we need to get bogged down.
But that might be one too much given it's, it's a state, it's a state approval and
we're just simply saying that.
That's estimated as well.
That's got to come up in a couple paragraphs.
Okay.
And then the only thing I'd add on, the next one, 13, is a groundwater discharge permit is required for mass DEP for the onsite treatment system.
13 will be amended as just stated. 14. The applicant shall seek state permitting so as to construct and maintain a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment system that discharges an annual average per day limit of three milligrams per liter of total nitrogen and has the capacity to add a sufficient number of nearby residences or take other measures to ensure that there is no net increase in nitrogen discharge to the Great Pond watershed as a result of the project.
I have questions, Jim.
Me as well.
Um, so item number 14, now is that, should that say the, on an annualized average? Because to achieve three milligrams per liter per day of nitrogen discharge and to use state-of-the-art, um, equipment, what is state-of-the-art? Can state-of-the-art actually achieve three milligrams per liter?
Mm-hmm.
And is that based on an annualized?
Yeah.
Average versus if they fail on a day or a week or something like that?
Mr. Chair. It's, it's in there.
So let me just summarize. Chair, I think that's covered by the, I'm sorry.
Let me just, let me just, because I'm really not being very clear. Um, does it have to say per day on an annualized, annualized average? And is use of the term state-of-the-art adequate? I don't know what else you might put there, but is the state-of-the-art adequate to get you to three milligrams, uh, per liter per day on an annualized basis? I'm just bringing it up. I don't, I'm not an engineer. I don't know.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I would assert or propose that it's the Title V permit that's being issued. They routinely go through maximum load, uh, maximum daily load, annual average load. We're telling them we want three milligrams per liter. It's in compliance with a comprehensive permit, uh, the TWMP. I, I think the state has enough to know what we're insisting on. Three milligrams per liter. And it's going to be, the way they write the permits is, and I get mixed up between federal and state. They'll have a maximum daily and they might have an annual daily, or they could even have a monthly, the averaging. That's why I'm saying, you know, I'm way out of my league now because of an absent 10 years from it. But those things are covered in the permit.
I, I drafted the condition based on your, um, I forget her title. She had had recommendation.
Wastewater superintendent.
Wastewater superintendent gave you written comments during the public hearing.
Yes.
So the language here is what she recommended. That's where I got the average, how I, how I worded it. So I went by her comments on that.
If it comes from her, I would think.
That's the subject, that's the subject matter expert. If that's her language referral, then.
It needs to be on a yearly average because.
Yes.
In the summertime, when, when it's getting a greater flow and then all of a sudden September comes or whenever it is, and the, and the, the system throttles down, it takes it a, a certain period of time to, to level off and get back down. So they might have periods that are higher and that's why you need to do it over the yearly average.
Annual average per day. I mean, it sounds inconsistent, but it's.
We don't have the expertise in this board to deliberate that.
Well, I know.
We have a, we have a expert from the town.
I know. That's a fact.
Well, fine, but you don't speak for the board.
I, I didn't speak for the board. I spoke for myself.
And all I'm saying is the board should rely on our expert wastewater superintendent.
That's why they do it on a yearly average. Because you can't consistently keep these things running when there's a change in the daily flow.
It has to be a per day average.
Yeah.
And it says.
Over the.
Annual average per day.
Yeah.
That's right.
Annual ever, yeah, so.
Do we mention this as Falmouth, the town of Falmouth's regs?
We do. I mean, if we're defending it, we will, but.
Wastewater superintendent's comments, not their regs.
Yeah.
These were comments.
You're conditioning it. And then if it gets appealed, we'll have to justify it.
Okay.
And I assumed you'd be able to justify it because you're superintendent.
Justify.
The language you use.
And that's what the town uses for theirs as well.
That's what I was getting at. I don't know if that goes in.
And then the no net increase, one, one other issue I just wanted to call to your attention is they may appeal this based on where I say, or take other measures to ensure there is no net increase in nitrogen discharge to the Great Pond watershed. Uh, they may object to that on appeal. I just wanted to give you a heads up.
I don't.
You, you all talked about you wanted that as a condition.
Yeah. I think that the environmental concerns have been one of the overwhelming objections from the Butters and most com- heavily commented on from various experts who live in this town.
That's why it's in there, so.
And that's why the stubs are there because in the event of it can be adjusted by.
I think it's fine the way it's worded.
Put in in the very beginning. Sorry, I'm not.
Just a heads up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I think it's important.
I guess just, and I'm sorry to continue on this. So if they, if the state approves, the mass DEP approves the system and they exceed this potential three mil-, what's, what's the cause and effect? What's the penalty phase? What's the, uh, how do they cure?
Well, if this ends up.
Jump to the neighborhood on the stubs.
No, that's not your question. Your, your question is if mass DEP approves something different and you have this condition, what will control? If this ends up not getting appealed, this will still be in full force and effect, independently enforceable. If it gets appealed or overturned, then you'll be strictly bound if mass DEP does something different. You know, hopefully as a result of that process, you're going to come up with a mutually acceptable solution to it. That's what mass DEP comes up with is consistent with your.
And then again, through their reporting, three years from now, five years from now, they come up with four milligrams on an annual. What's the cure? What's the penalty phase? There's, it is what it is?
No, you would be able to enforce this if it, if it ends up not getting appealed or if it gets upheld on appeal. You'd be able to enforce this condition.
Right.
But that, that's why I gave you the heads up. They may appeal this.
Mr. Chair. Is it a rebuttable presumption that the Title V permit has to be issued to be consistent with surface water quality standards? The permit, in my mind, would be illegal if it wasn't consistent with surface water quality standards vis a vis to the TMDL. So this is really, if they're complying with the state permit, I don't know how we could override that by this condition.
I just explained it. If, if the condition, if they end up not, say they don't appeal.
Okay.
All right. Um, they don't appeal and your condition and, and then, and also there's no Superior Court or land court lawsuit filed by a Butters or project opponents. And you end up that this is your permit. Does it get overturned on appeal? It's fully enforceable.
Okay.
Regardless of what mass DEP orders. If it gets overturned on appeal, it won't be enforceable at all. So, and that's why, what I'm giving you the heads up about where the jurisdictional issue comes in, I can tell you, as I fight them all the time on it, I have pending cases with them, with HAC, that if they think something is subject to state permitting, they will typically hold that the board is beyond its jurisdiction to get into those issues. And as I explained, so don't be surprised if you get an appeal of it. But, but as I said earlier, I think it is justifiable what you're doing based on local concerns.
Town does.
That it isn't strictly a state issue. It's also a matter of local policy.
Anyone on the board that wants this condition removed?
No.
No, no, because.
They said they were going to meet, and I believe it's their full intention too. And in the event that it doesn't, that's why the proposed stubs are there. It gives a, a form of mitigation or whatever.
Yeah, but they're not putting the stubs there representing that they're going to have net zero.
Right.
They're, they are just saying, we'll put the stubs there if you want to use them or we'll do other things to offset it. But they're not saying, we're going to take measures to ensure no net increase. So that's, that's the only issue. Just be aware.
But over the, if it, if it doesn't maintain the yearly average of three, then.
And they're not representing that either. As you'll recall, they're saying they'll use best practices or whatever they said.
They said best efforts to meet an annual average concentration of three milligrams per liter. So that, the applicant shall propose to mass DEP that the permit discharge limitations reflect the town's discharge permit, which I think is the three milligrams per liter.
Perfect.
So they've already offered it, so why would they appeal it? Well, I, I understand. That was naive. But the fact is, um, it, it, you can defend that. They offered it. I think we should leave it as.
They did offer.
I didn't say I couldn't. I said I feel comfortable with defending it.
Okay.
All right, moving on.
Just wanted to give you the heads up.
Any need, any additional modifications to number 14?
Well, I would just like to see that perhaps, the comment that it's consistent with the town's.
That's what I was wondering if we don't put that in.
Can we just put that in?
Yeah.
What happens if the town permit gets changed?
No, don't worry about that.
Okay.
Did you get that, George?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Consistent with the town?
In the middle, okay.
So this is another area?
The three milligrams per liter of total nitrogen because that's consistent with the.
County.
The town's, um, permit.
Regulations.
Permit.
The town has actually a permit where.
Oh, okay, permit, okay.
They've got a wastewater facility and that's what they're using. So they're asking to have that matched.
Okay. Anything else? Frank, is that enough for you?
Yeah.
15. There should be no division or subdivision of the property or the creation of additional housing units or any other structures, including sheds, without further approval of the board under the procedures stated in 760 CMR 56.0511.
Mr. Chairman, may I just question that for a minute? Uh, where it says that right now the land is in two lots, the 28 acres and the house at 375. If I'm correct, Noreen?
No, no.
It's all one, the entire parcel exists today as one parcel, including where the existing houses today.
Correct.
Yes. I looked at the GIS map and it seems to be separate, but it's not. We're, we're sure of that.
Well, there, there's two lots.
That's right. So if there can be no subdivision, then there should be a condition that says that they will provide a plan where the, all the land is joined together, including the front, number 375, whatever this is. Well, to be consistent with what we're saying, there shall be no division or subdivision of the property.
That's a merger, not a division.
Like what?
It's a merger, not a division.
All right. I didn't know the term, but.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, I'm not sure. I didn't see what you're saying.
Two lots or merged.
Take two lots and put them together, you merge them. It's not a division.
So we should have, so shouldn't there be a condition that they merge the lots?
No, it says, no, I don't.
I think the tax, uh, the, the assessor is going to require them to merge the lots. Is that not correct?
Yes.
She has the authority.
In order to tax them properly? They have to be merged. I'm quite sure. We just did it, uh.
Yes.
Yes.
They just did it with the, um, boathouse for the same reason, I believe, but I could be wrong.
I'll go along with the wisdom of the court.
No, I think it makes sense because obviously their access is through the first parcel, which they're using as part of their totals, so.
Anything else? 16. Seventy-five of the 300 total units shall remain in perpetuity affordable to eligible renters whose annual income shall not exceed 80% of the area median income, AMI, as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The applicant shall provide a proposed list of affordable units to the board to demonstrate that there is an equitable distribution of affordable units throughout the development, including unit size, and we have a red line addition, prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Which is good to put that in. Where do we put in that local, um, town people get preference? Is that in 17? In 17, we can put local?
Yes, I think that's the appropriate place. And I, I had, um, some changes on, um, 16.
Oh, did you?
I would say households instead of renters on the second line.
Okay.
And then, um.
That's good.
Uh, there's a couple of things. Um, after United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, I would add and EO HLC, who I had defined earlier. And then, you know, the equitable distribution, I, I think I would just add, subject to the approval of the subsidizing agency, just so that you're not, um, seeking to condition things that are otherwise within the purview of the subsidizing agency.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
But the prior of the issuance of the building permit's good.
Anything else?
So you wanted to add a line about local preference and something.
Yeah, I, I think it's better in 17 maybe?
Okay.
I think.
Yep. No, that makes sense.
What, uh, what percentage?
So what happens is the, the town's housing coordinator, in conjunction with the town, would put together a letter requesting that, um, the town have, at least for the initial round of, um, rents, renters, that you can have a certain percentage of local preference. And the state sort of asks you to demonstrate that you have that need before they grant that, but we can certainly ask them. We should ask.
Why can't, why can't we require a percentage like 75?
It's within the purview of the subsidizing agency.
Doesn't that have?
You, you can ask.
Yeah, but doesn't the federal housing, uh, requirements only, um, apply if they're getting money from the federal government, which I don't believe? No? Seventy percent?
My breath's not terrible.
So we, we can.
Let's not have anything answered from anybody beyond this.
Well, i- is that correct? Can we require in here, require here?
What I would recommend is you just add a sentence. The applicant shall also cooperate with the town for a local preference as allowed by the subsidizing agency because.
That's it. Short and sweet.
In their purview. And as Noreen had pointed out, what they'll, what they do is they look for a letter from the town justifying it. Then they'll act on it. And they, they will do it, but you, you can't.
The high watermark.
You can't put the percentage in.
The high watermark isn't 70% then, as he just stated.
I don't know what the high watermark is, but you don't have the jurisdiction to order
I think the language is just to the extent lawfully permitted.
There you go. I'll take that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's a good one. Are we going to vote on that or we're just going to?
No.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Yeah, to the extent, you go along with that, right, Frank?
Yes, I do.
Yep.
Local preference to the extent, what?
Lawfully permitted.
Yeah. And our boy Frank's on the affordable housing committee, so.
All right. Now you read 17, just so we have it there. The 75 affordable year-round, not seasonal rental units shall be subject to a regulatory agreement, fair marketing and income guidelines. Certification of compliance with affordable housing regulations shall be submitted annually to the board and Falmouth's Affordable Housing Coordinator. The certification shall include documentation that each affordable rental unit is occupied by a qualified renter as their principal, should it be qualified household?
Yeah.
Renter? Uh, as their principal residence, the affordable unit shall remain affordable in perpetuity with the use restriction recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and shall survive sale. Any resale of the redevelopment shall be properly reported to the board and the town's affordable housing designee and include the fact that any future owner is subject to all terms and conditions listed herein. Where this is a rental development, all units shall be included in the subsidized housing inventory, SHI, and the applicant shall work cooperatively with the town to ensure that the units are timely placed on the town's SHI and included for certification, compliance, and progress towards the town's housing production plan.
Yep, and just add that sentence and we're good.
Yeah, then the, the applicant shall also cooperate with the town for a local preference to the extent lawfully permitted.
Yeah, right.
Brilliant.
And then the next one, I don't know if board members have a question, but I have a, questions on the, this short-term rental issue. Uh, there were comments from board members, the applicant had proposed something during the hearing. I'm confused as to what you're really seeking. And, and I came up with the language that I put in 18.
So number 18. The rentals shall be year-round leases. Provisions shall be made for those in the military or long-term assignments. Short-term, less than 30 days, or seasonal leases, subleases are prohibited.
That's, seems good to me.
Yeah.
Uh, just one second.
Is the 30-day, wouldn't 60 be better?
Right. And, and, you know, they had, the applicant had talked about a four-month, um.
Well, there you go. I need that.
Definition during the public hearing. So, you know, I, I'm.
That would eliminate summer rentals altogether and, and I'm all for that. So four-month would be 120 days.
No, they're, they, they wanted during the public hearing of, um, that the rentals shall be a minimum of four months. That the majority are year-round, but that they also wanted the ability to have four months.
Well, that'd go, that'd change this 30 number to 120 then.
It, it would change it. I, that's why I'm putting it to the board is for you to discuss and decide.
I'll make that a motion. Second half, Frank?
Fine.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor of the amendment to 120 days, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So, so wait, so you're saying you're defining short-term, less than 120 days?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else at 18?
This is a, on 18. Do we mean for those in the military on long-term assignments? I don't know with those in the military on long-term assignments.
Or long-term assignments.
Or.
Well, there's nothing, we're not saying that we're not letting them enter a five-year lease or a long-term lease.
Yeah, that's completely separate from the 120 days anyway because it's only a provision for military. The 120 days applies for everybody else. I mean, we should make exceptions in provisions for the military. And I think it's worded quite properly if we change it to 120 days.
Oh, no, we agreed to that, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
But I mean, I don't think anymore is necessary because it, they, they're separate. And, um, so if somebody's here for 90 days in the military, they can rent to them. Right?
Yep.
Perfect.
Provisions.
Then actually, I, I'm sorry, then we needed to change the first sentence because it says the rentals shall be year-round leases. And that's inconsistent with when you then said. So.
With the exception of.
Which is just a short-term leases of less than 120 days.
You just got to strike that whole year-round.
That should be it.
What do you mean year-round? Is that just one year? Why can't they lease something for two years?
Oh, they can. Two-year-round leases. But if we're going to go 120 days, you kind of have to strike that whole sentence.
The rentals shall be a minimum of four months and the majority of the rentals shall shall be year-round leases?
Yeah, that's even more...
And then, you, you would define the short-term as you did, Mark. So that would be consistent, if, if you said, "The rentals shall be a minimum of four months, and the majority of the rentals, year-round leases," because that's what they represented.
And then, there's the exception.
Then provisions shall be made for those in the military or long-term assignments, then, short-terms, per n, less than one hundred and twenty days, close per n, or seasonal leases and subleases are prohibited.
Yeah.
Good?
And that gives them the opportunity to...
Great.
Fill empty units with military in the short period of time, and...
Got it.
...make the place full.
I feel great now, because I, I just didn't know what the Board really was thinking about those issues.
It was funky.
Nineteen. "The applicant shall provide the zoning board with a copy of the audited cost certification of the development within one hundred and eighty days of the completion of construction."
I would just add, that will be provided to the subsidizing agency before, within one hundred and eighty days, because us, you're not, you're entitled to what they provide to the subsidizing agency.
So, to strike the zoning board to provide the subsidizing...
No, leave the zoning board, but just of the development that will be provided to the subsidizing agency. In other words, they're just providing you a copy of what they're providing to the subsidizing agency.
Twenty. "The applicant shall submit a proposed development sign with dimensioned specifications prior to the installation to ensure compliance with standard requirements and demonstrate appropriate sitting."
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Sighting, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, your question. Now, it says with, with standard requirements, who standard requirements?
Design review.
Town has signed.
Sorry, I have a design review.
Does it have to say that?
Yeah.
Or is it implied?
It's, it's implied, it's part of the permit, you can't have a sign bigger than the town allows.
Well, so, you can make an exception on these developments.
Well, why would we? I mean, everybody else should, they should abide by the rules that everyone else applies to, which are the town's sign and design review criteria.
Right, but sometimes there are appropriate exceptions, so, for example, given the size of this development, you may find, potentially, that you wanna have a sign that's of a certain dimension, so that it's viewable on the road, so that, you know, people that are looking for this particular property, or delivery vehicles, or whatever, are, have adequate notice that the property's coming up for turning, et cetera.
But I, I think that's already incorporated into our, I mean, I don't think they should be allowed anything larger than...
But they can come and ask you.
Yeah, I mean, they won't, they can come and ask the selectmen, but other than that, they go to abide by the same rules as everyone else, and I think putting a provision in there that says they don't is inappropriate. My feeling.
Well, they have the sign outlined anyways, so.
So twenty is okay, as written?
Data's up.
That's what, that's...
I mean, I guess the other thing I'll point out to you is, we have had developments where signs were installed, and incorrect addresses were posted, right? And so, you know, somebody would put the development's name and put a street number, and so it can be very misleading if the name of the development doesn't match the street and the street number, so...
We already have it here as three seventy-five Sandwich Road on the application.
I'm gonna make an amendment to strike the word standard and put town.
I like that, yeah.
I like that.
Yeah.
Strike standard and put town.
Yeah.
Any objection?
No.
Are you unanimous?
Perfect.
unanimous. Anything else?
We're rolling along now.
Moving on. Twenty-one, "The applicant shall install a stop sign exiting the entrance of the development onto Sandwich Road as approved by the D P W. The applicant shall also install a streetlight at the entrance to the driveway as approved by the D P W. The applicant shall install a sidewalk multimodal path along the northerly side of the driveway to minimally the clubhouse and suitable walkways connecting to the various apartment buildings and site amenities. The applicant shall also continue the sidewalk across the full width of the premises along Sandwich Road for pedestrian access."
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Sorry, but why haven't we, everybody has discussed and talked about how dangerous this road is, Mr. Finneran's brought that up many, many times.
And the next one.
Why, but why aren't we having the requirement to put a street, a traffic light there? Why can't we put a traffic light there?
Can't condition that, that's...
It's a state road.
It's beyond, it's, it's, yeah, it's beyond our purview.
But we can do something in the, in twenty-two. I think that's entirely incorrect, but let's get through twenty-one first.
Twenty-one's fine.
You can't mandate a light on a state road.
So it's a state road?
But we can, but we can mandate the approval of this project that creates a problem on that road.
It's beyond our purview, do you have any other changes? We're gonna move on.
Can you go there?
Do you have any other questions about the condition, or anything else?
How about additional signage? We still can't say merging in a hundred and fifty feet, or something like that.
It has to be done to the D P W, that they can, the, the police chief, as well as, I think there's a traffic committee, can certainly always, for safety reasons, add additional signage, but a stop sign at the end of the development's about as far as we can go, and sidewalks, of course, within the development.
And, and, don't think that they're not going to, because it's, it's obvious.
Right.
And, uh, that, which might include a flashing yellow light, or something, but it is, yeah, that, that falls on the, Josh, I mean, he's, I'm sure that there's gonna be some further additional stipulation, or whatever, because it's, it's an obvious danger.
And I'm sorry, I've been being short with you, Tony, I'm just, but it's beyond our purview, so I'm gonna keep going down.
Oh, no, I, no, that's your job, you're the chair.
Yeah, a question should be answered, too, so everyone's clear.
Twenty-two, "The applicant shall make a financial contribution to the town in the amount of forty thousand dollars to assist with sidewalk and/or other off-site traffic mitigation."
I totally disagree with that. I think the applicant should construct the sidewalk that he offered in the beginning, from the entrance of this project down to Brick Hill Road. Further, I wanna state that the state, um, has recently, God, I can't think of the term, connector, or, or some such, which is going to make bike accessibility from twenty-eight A all the way to Oxbow, and I think that, um, it's also coming up, they're gonna do the same, uh, from Brick Hill Road to one fifty-one, and with the amount of contribution that this development is gonna give to Sandwich Road, I think they should be, and it's in my condition that I submitted, they certainly should construct the sidewalk they offered in the very beginning, from the entrance down to Brick Hill Road, with a, uh, five-foot grass strip and a sidewalk, either, I'd prefer a granite curb, but, um, whatever, with a curbing. Um, and then it could be, yeah, once the state has its next connectivity plan, I believe that's it, um, they've already dealt with their contribution and responsibility, but to not require them to build the sidewalk that they offered in the very first part of this meeting is dangerous. Um, and the forty thousand dollar, there's some dispute whether the applicant's explanation of that during, I don't recall the date of the meeting, is a, actually correct. The town wants a sidewalk from Brick Hill Road to one fifty-one, um, and, uh, that's, forty thousand is wholly inadequate, it barely covers the sidewalk in front of their place, and, um, I mean, and, and these people are gonna be walking, biking, there's already connectivity from Sandwich Road down to twenty-eight, and to not continue it and connect to this development is, um, unacceptable.
It's a question...
And, uh, they offered it, I mean, why would we let them pull that offer off the table? I mean, the, the amount of traffic that this is gonna contribute to Sandwich Road is certainly far in excess of what was presented by their engineer, which was taken as, um, stated in the findings during February, I mean, at an absolute bare minimum. I, I, I don't see an argument for them not constructing a sidewalk all the way to Brick Hill Road.
Can we condition, we can't condition things outside the locus of the property. They can offer, but other than, they're making an offer, and I believe...
Well, why would they offer and then take the offer back?
Remember, if I recall correctly, that we're talking about, we're talking about putting a sidewalk over certain people's private property, and that there may not be enough space.
There's a, the town already...
The question I have, counsel, that's a condition that we would not legally be able to impose on an applicant.
The town already has a plan, um, to construct a sidewalk from Brick Hill Road to one fifty-one, um, and the cost was somewhere in the neighborhood of two-point-three million dollars, uh, and we just did not have the money. It's entirely feasible, and I, I even believe that the plan is there, so, um, I, I'm sorry, but I think you would be incorrect in that statement. It can be constructed, and it is on, it, it, it's on the wish list, so to speak, and then when the state comes through, like I said, there is already a connectivity plan as of, I believe, last fall, you can check with the bike committee, from twenty-eight A to Oxbow, and they wanna do the same thing to one fifty-one. Because of the amount of traffic that already exists, uh, I, I think this is an absolute requirement. I mean, we have to keep the people safe that are exiting that property and heading...
A sensible condition?
The only, the only thing I can do is give you parameters, you know, you can do off, you can require off-site, uh, mitigation if it's related to the project. Having said that, you gotta take one more step, is, it's very hard to defend a condition that isn't supported by your peer reviewer during the public hearing.
How about...
So, if, so that's all I'll really say about it, and, and then it's up to you...
How about, how about if we, I mean, if, for absolute, first off, they offered in the beginning, um, it's desired, it's on the wish list, it's been designed already, it's been put out to bid, and the bid came in too high, the town didn't have enough money. Well, then how about if we condition that they pay fifty percent?
Mr. Chair?
Derek?
I, I, I'd like to go and say, we side with the town's professional consultants that commented on this. I'm not saying Mark is right or wrong, I'm saying, that, that is information that should have been provided to us by our experts, or the town.
Yeah, it, I mean, I, I have conditioned in other towns, something similar to what Mr. Finneran talked about, conditioned, "If the town proceeds with a sidewalk project, the applicant shall contribute fifty percent," or a certain, uh, some certain, I've seen that, but you still need it supported in, in the record, you know, either through your peer reviewer, or town standards, or the town department commenting and saying, "Absolutely, I know that there's going to be, you know, whatever, walking along the street," or...
I can say that in the meetings, uh, on the redevelopment and the redesign of Route twenty-eight, uh, this was spoken of, and I, I know for a fact that it has been designed, and I know it was put out to bid, and the town didn't have the money, so I'd make a motion that the developer should be required to pay fifty percent of the cost of the construction of a sidewalk from Brick Hill Road to the entrance of the proposed property. Is there a second?
Do we have a time limit on that?
Yeah. Well, when the town wants to do it.
Ten years from now?
Uh, it's, I know the connectivity thing is coming up soon, within the next couple of years. Twenty, like I said, twenty-eight A to Oxbow is already done, it's on the state's plans.
We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion.
We do have a second?
We have a second. Sue Sam.
I, I did second, I'm, I'm just worried that it may not be defendable.
I, 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 I think sidewalks are absolutely appropriate, but I don't wanna get this into an appeal with an absolutely unenforceable condition.
Well, if, if, uh, it's been done before, it's on the drawing board, I can assure you of that, right down to a cost estimate, and the town did not proceed...
Is it in our record?
Is there something in the record?
I get back, I'm sorry.
Mentions it, I don't remember.
So it's not on the record?
No.
This hearing's record.
We don't have anything from the town regarding that.
I don't know if you can come up with any language that's defendable, I, I don't know. I think it's...
I, I gave you the parameters, you know, and it really has to be based on something that has been recommended to you, either through the peer reviewer, or the town, that D P W, or...
And that does not exist, right?
I mean, not...
It may exist, it's not part of our record, though.
Well, it was, they, they initially offered it, so, I mean, uh, I...
They also offered Plan A, so...
Well, hey, whatever, and they offered something better, I mean, they're still cutting, you know, I mean, that's six of one, half a dozen of the other, but, I mean, a, a sidewalk is, is absolutely imperative there, and to ask them to pay fifty percent when they offered to pay a hundred percent, I mean, I, I, I would be comfortable, I mean, we have a second, I would be comfortable going through with that, and, um, whatever, if we lose, we lose, but it's gonna happen.
But we lose, we lose big, though, if we lose.
I would prefer not to put something in the permit that may be questionable as far as defensibility. I still will...
You can, you can vote no.
Mark, maybe right, but none of the technical experts agree with you. The town hasn't weighed in to this board on the issues you raised. Sidewalks are important.
I have to... Absolutely.
I, I can't vote for this.
We, we have a motion, we have a second, I'm gonna, for the question.
And I, I think we should err on the side of caution, and...
Yeah, I, I should tell, talk about the process a little bit more, too. I mean, in the event of an appeal, it isn't always all or no, it, it's all or nothing if you end up in full-blown litigation, and the H A C ends up rendering a decision after a full-blown evidentiary hearing. In that event, if they overrule you, they, they, they're not gonna pick and choose conditions, they tend to go rapid-fire and pretty much strike everything and give you a boilerplate permit. There is a process before that, though. If an appeal is filed to H A C, there's an opportunity for dialogue, there's a conference of counsel with the presiding officer, there's a chance to mediate, and, you know, there's an opportunity within that process, even if there is an appeal, to strike certain conditions, if it gets right back to the Board, that, yeah, we, we would be comfortable striking condition thirty-four if that resolves the appeal. So you, you will have that opportunity, you know, as part of that process, if, if you choose, so, so, I, I don't wanna imply that there's like all or nothing, you know?
And I mean...
Scott, you have a question?
Unfortunately, I'm gonna continue to muddy the water. Under twenty-two, the applicant may, uh, shall make a financial contribution. In a previous discussion, we said that there'd be no net increase in nitrogen discharge, by default, it's gonna increase. So where, would we capture any potential cost to the town? Would it be here in item twenty-two?
No. For, for wastewater?
No, it says, I...
No, that's only has to do with sidewalk.
I, it's, I'm, I'm stuck on financial contribution.
Yeah, this only relates to traffic.
Oh, so you wanna loop off the sidewalk? I'm talking about a financial contribution from the developer, that how are we going to offset that there will be a net increase in nitrogen? Is there no way for us to say, in years four through fourteen, that they donate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the town to get to a net nitrogen offset?
I mean, you have the condition that...
I mean, we, we said the words.
Yeah.
And by default, they're going to increase the nitrogen levels. So where do we claw back money that the town will probably have to pay to offset that nitrogen?
I mean, you're requiring that it is a, there is no net increase. That's your requirement.
I don't understand the math, then. I thought we would seek a financial offset to it.
No, you're requiring no net increase.
I, I don't...
So it's their obligation to fix it?
Yeah. Yeah. Because they'd be in violation, right?
Okay, so that's, okay, so good, I apologize for the confusion.
I wanna get this back to the motion that's before us regarding Mr. Finneran's amendment. Do you have any questions about that, or discussion about that?
No, I apologize.
Any other comments, I think, I'll call the question, then. Uh, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The nay, two?
Nay.
Three. Three to two, okay, the amendment fails. We're back to the original language, "The applicant shall make a financial contribution The applicant shall make a financial contribution to the town in the amount of $40,000 to assist with the sidewalk and/or other off-site traffic mitigation.
Can I offer something? Provided that it equivocates to 50% of the cost of that sidewalk.
It's not going to be an $80,000 sidewalk. I mean, you can't pay a driveway for 40.
How about, how about if we increase?
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
How about if we?
It doesn't even do the design.
The first one failed. How about if we increase this 40,000 to 120,000, which would cover half the cost of a sidewalk from Brick Hill to the entrance?
The design is going to be 40 grand.
It's already designed.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay.
Town has already designed it.
Mr. Chair, again, I think we have to go on the basis of information that's come in this board during the public hearings.
I don't disagree.
Where's the, where's the information that justifies this 40,000?
The applicant offered the 40,000. I don't think, I think the applicant offered the 40,000, that's how it got there.
I wrote this condition just strictly what they had offered during the public hearing. That's where it ended up.
Well, so.
That's the only basis for it, so.
But, I mean, why not, sorry, but why not on the basis of the initial offer of constructing a sidewalk from Brick Hill to the entrance and find a happy medium of 120 grand?
I'm going to move the question as written. Roll call vote, please. Tanis?
I like this motion, I'm not sure we'll vote voting on it.
As written, applicant shall make a financial contribution to the town in the amount of $40,000 to assist with sidewalk and/or off-site traffic mitigation.
I approve as written.
Duffy?
Duffy, aye.
Mr. Finneran?
Nay.
Horace Wood, aye. Mrs. Murphy?
Murphy, nay.
It's a three to two vote, so. 22, as written, is.
I just don't want to get it snagged.
23, the clubhouse shall not be a separate rentable property for events other than for residents.
I have a question about fencing around the play areas in the pool. Does that fit in, in this area?
Can't have a pool without a fence or an automatic cover.
It'd be out of plans, wouldn't it?
It's a state requirement, so it's.
But the playground isn't, and I want it around the playground, too. They're right next to each other, I think. On my old plan, new plan might have them different, I don't know. Yeah, they're right next to each other.
For sure.
I don't understand what we just got, we're talking about the clubhouse, period.
No, I'm talking about the pool area and the playground to the right of the clubhouse.
Does that include the clubhouse?
No.
Then what condition are we on?
We're on number 23. I think that's going to be a new condition.
Yeah, I just asked, is this the time to insert this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what I asked, yeah.
So just to the board, I think, why don't we get through these numbers, and then if there's other things that you want to add, we'll come back if that's whatever.
Well, I mean, why don't we add it to the, to the vinyl thing, the, you know, the approved plans plus no vinyl fencing added, I mean, seriously. With whatever conditions you want to add to what the approved plans.
Okay.
So you want pool and playground to be fenced?
Playground fencing, yeah. I mean, if I lived there, I want, I would want the dog park to be done, too, but I don't know, I don't even know if that shows it or.
Is proposed.
My plans aren't proper.
Any objections?
No.
Everybody can have ever seen that.
It wasn't fenced.
24, once plant materials are installed, the use of fertilizer should be discontinued to support the water quality.
Mr. Chairman?
Tony.
Should be is, I think it's passive, I think that should be replaced with shall be.
Yes.
So other plant materials.
The applicant agreed to the first.
And all been established?
Do we address herbicides and pesticides?
Catch that.
Well, did we get past, did we get, are we doing shall be versus?
I'm an aye on shall.
I don't have a problem with shall.
Shall be.
That's unanimous and set.
24.
We want a provision about, good, after growing seasons or so, to give them chance, opportunity for the plants to take.
No, fertilizers for the grass.
Okay.
Do we need to address herbicides and pesticides at all?
Is that controlled by the Department of Agriculture or somebody?
Do one thing at a time.
Yeah, I mean, but I'd add it, I'd put it there if she's talking about that. Once plant materials are installed, the use of fertilizer shall be discontinued.
I'll put a counsel's jury in on that answer.
Yeah, okay.
And, and add no herbicides?
There should be no herbicides or pesticides. Just add another sentence, yeah.
All right. Any additional modifications? 25, the applicant shall keep the town's wastewater superintendent apprised of the review process with the DEP regarding the review of the proposed wastewater treatment 26, upon any such DEP approval, the applicant shall submit WWTF details to the board for approval of the placement and setback for the structure. 27, this comprehensive permit shall be a master permit, which shall subsume all local permits and approvals normally issued by local boards, other than as specifically enumerated in a condition. The Board of Health and Conservation Commission are excluded from this provision. 28, this comprehensive permit shall not be transferred without express written approval of the board.
That one I need to amend because I reviewed the regulation. It really has to be, this comprehensive permit shall be, shall not be transferred without express written approval of a subsidizing agency with notice to the board. And there's a specific regulation related to that.
Okay.
Because they're free to sell it. Because they're free to sell it.
Yes.
Well, it has, it still has to be approved.
They have to go through an assessor.
But it's really within the province of a subsidizing agency only because it's specifically in the regulation.
Yeah.
So it was just.
That's a good one.
As amended, anything else? 29, each condition in this decision shall run with the land and shall, in accordance with its terms, be applicable to and binding on the applicant and the applicant's successors as signees. 30, this permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that 20 days has elapsed and the decision has been filed in the office of the town clerk with no appeal being filed, is recorded in the Barnstable Registry of Deeds, or that an appeal has been filed within such time. Any person exercising rights under a duly appealed comprehensive permit does so at risk that a court may reverse the permit and that any construction performed under the permit may be ordered undone.
Any reason why that's in parentheses other than?
I'll put it in the scrum.
Just sort of a reminder, it's not really a condition.
Yeah.
But I can take the parentheses out, no problem.
31, this permit shall lapse three years from the date of which the decision is filed in the town clerk's office if a substantial use of the comprehensive permit has not sooner commenced except for good cause as determined by the board.
Yeah, and this one, I also need an amendment, the regulation, there's a specific regulation applicable to it, so, as defined. So the only thing I would say is, the permit shall lapse three years from the date on which the decision becomes final pursuant to 760 CMR, 56.0512C, and then the rest is the same. If a substantial, then the only thing that that language substitutes is following the town clerk's office, only because the regulation is specific, you want to follow that.
Any further amendments?
And they do come back to you, by the way, on those. If they're really not commenced in three years, if there's a lengthy court appeal or whatever, they'll come back.
So are there other general conditions, things that people, that people want to add or had questions about before we go into conditions prior to site work?
Are we going to go back and circle around to the vinyl siding and the other issue that I forgot? Is it here or later?
I was going to add conditions to what the approved plans are with the addition of fencing around the dog park, pool, and playground, and no vinyl or similar materials for siding. Is that all right? Whatever else you wanted to add.
Yeah, that's okay.
In other words, details beyond what do you have in the approved plans?
So we need a motion for that so we can approve it?
I don't think, well, no.
He's going to do it. Unanimous consent.
Yeah, remember, you're not amending a, no permit is issued, you're just working on this.
What is wordsmithing at this point?
Wordsmithing, I like that.
I did have one before. We were, I was asking a few times about the generator, and Phil Cordero just said that there was going to be lighting in the elevators, and I found that to be a safety hazard. He lived on the fourth floor, and there's a fire, and I asked for a generator or something to make the elevators work during, and I don't know if that can come in during, before.
You're talking about a standby generator?
Yeah.
I'd put it in general conditions.
General conditions?
Just like Jim just said, do, does anybody have additional ones?
So that could be later?
I'd put it that section.
We haven't put it in yet, right?
No.
So what do you want to put in?
Well, I, you want to discuss it?
Where do you want to put it in?
No, I want to put it in general conditions, which we're in right now, so just tell me what the.
That's why I thought I should speak.
Mr. Chair, is that the elevators are pre-programmed not to go to the first floor. They're controlled by state and, and probably local building permits. I, I know what you're saying, but if they, if, the elevator is maintained by people other than us, and I talked to one elevator expert, and I know it's hearsay, but he's the one that said they're pre-programmed to go to a certain floor. If there's a fire, they don't go up and down. People don't necessarily maintain the batteries on the battery-operated permit. So, I mean, if we want a generator.
So what do we do about the fourth floor person?
Lockdown.
How many times?
What if there's a person that's not able to walk down?
This, that's not our decision. They shouldn't be put on the first, fourth floor. The elevator won't help that person if the power's out. I mean, yeah, if, you know, unless we.
Generator kicks in, the power's not out anymore.
If, if we want to put in a generator.
That's what I, I asked about.
That's what you asked for.
You can't require an elevator to run during a fire. I mean, it's great to have power, but if there's a fire and the elevator is involved, it's not going to.
They automatically go to the first floor or some other pre-designated.
You should just build the code, and that's.
Yeah, build the code, I like that.
Highly regulated piece of equipment.
I'm just not used to this skyscraper stuff, I guess.
Other conditions to add to general, does anyone else have one?
The fourth story people are.
They'll be athletic.
They'll be athletic. We're putting all the healthy people in the fourth floor. All righty now, okay. Let's go.
Conditions prior to site work. Number 32, the applicant's engineer shall provide a fully engineered site plan with any changes to stormwater and drainage reports to the board to be peer-reviewed by the town's stormwater peer. No site work may commence prior to the peer's approval of proposed conditions.
Okay.
Do we want the peer or the board's approval? Or will the peer go directly?
Here's acting in our behalf.
The peer steps in on our stead.
Okay.
33, the town is specifically not waiving fees associated with construction, including but not limited to the water line, water tapping, sleeve, valve, water meters, engineering, and building department fees. 34, the water line shall be installed to town standards and approved by the water superintendent to ensure sufficiency of water for domestic and emergency use. 12-inch main proposed into the site, then an 8-inch water line to loop into the development. The water superintendent and fire department shall oversee the fire flow testing. The applicant shall comply with the Falmouth Water Department rules and regulations, including standards for materials and installation, and shall provide to the water department a plan of record as approved by the board. Any required water easement shall be, as required by the water and superintendent. Water department fees and requirements shall be the responsibility of the applicant. Separate applications for water service shall be made for each unit with appropriate plans, including a meter request. Water department sign-offs is required by building permits. Fire department approval is required for the sitting, sighting of any fire hydrants. Where a private driveway is proposed, the water main will be privately owned. Drawings shall include this note. All standards, policies, construction practices, or rules and regulations of the Falmouth Water Department shall be adhered to throughout the duration of the project. All fees and a draft of an easement must be secured before construction of the water main can commence.
I had just one question that I didn't know the answer to is, separate applications for water services, that per unit or building? I just don't know the answer to that.
There's a meter for each unit.
Thought it would be.
For building.
No, there's a meter for each unit. Individually metered.
Apply per unit for.
I, I think I disagree with that. It's for building, not per apartment.
This, meter per apartment.
That, I, I don't know if that's true.
Well, I've heard it from the water commissioner.
Why don't we just add per building or per unit?
Okay, that's right.
Now, each unit is going to, and they said they're going to all pay for their water in the, in the, like, third meeting, he said that each unit pays their own water bill. I think Suzanne asked the question.
I don't know for sure what they're going to do, but it's generally included in the rent as a fee, given the size of the unit, how much water they might use.
A unit renter would not be filing an application. The reason I ask the question is, separate applications for water service, it's, that to me, and I'm not the expert on it, but it, that means when they apply for water service for the building, not each person that rents files a separate application.
I think it's related to building, too, because I think typically what you're looking at, if you have separate dwelling units, like separate houses or accessory dwelling units, there could be a water service turned off to a structure, but you would not separately turn off the water service to a specific unit.
It, I actually asked the water superintendent, there's going to be a 12-inch main with an 8-inch loop, and each unit is going to have its own individual water meter. Take it for what it's worth.
Your last sentence, all fees and a executed easement? What good is a draft easement?
True.
Good.
All fees of an executed easement?
No, all fees and an executed easement must be secured.
Okay.
Do that. Okay. Any other amendments? 35, there should be no access to the premises by workers prior to the approved construction hours of before 7:00 AM or after 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and it is the applicant's responsibility to ensure compliance. No Sunday or town-observed holiday hours are allowed absent an emergency. All construction vehicles shall remain strictly on the subject property, shall not obstruct sidewalks or park on budding streets. Construction vehicles are prohibited from idling on or near the premises outside of construction hours. During construction, efforts shall be undertaken to minimize impacts on a butter, including screening dumpsters, stabilizing soil to guard against erosion from a rain event, utilizing a wash station, and ensuring that public roadways are kept clean in compliance of the town's Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standards, 820, 8, excuse me, 8 of 2020, Appendix A. The Zoning Board of Appeals has the permitting authority. The applicant, the applicant shall consult with town engineering site inspector regarding a preferred construction route to protect town roads and installation of a wash station and dust management during construction, and shall comply with general engineering requirements.
I have a question. Generally, we put in Monday through Friday, 7 to 7, and Saturday, 7 to 4, and of course, nothing on holidays or Sundays. Why, should we change it to this, just to accommodate them?
So on all the prior 40Bs, we gave them six days, six full days.
Why can't we just be, all right, you're just saying be consistent.
Yeah, and that, you know, for smaller residential developments, because it was, you know, residential home, they were given a shorter period of time on Saturday.
Can we cite the general bylaw about noise transmission across property lines? No, that's amplified music.
As I say, it's residential amplified music.
It does not apply to mechanical, only to.
There's no bylaw, reconstruction.
We got to change that.
It's coming up. Coming up, we're a little late. I would, I would like to put fencing around the property in this.
I don't think you can.
Why?
45 acres, 30 acres, are you going to fence that?
Well, how are they going to protect the?
I believe there's something later on about open hole, fencing around open holes and during excavation and so on, so.
It's going to be a construction manager.
It's also ocean safety issue.
They have to guard their own, okay.
Anything else on 35? 36, the applicant shall conduct the wildlife habitat study described in the Goddard Wildlife Memo dated March 28, 2024, attached hereto as Appendix B. It shall also comply with the Goddard Wildlife Protection Plan attached as Appendix C. It shall report to the board concerning compliance. The applicant shall also follow the recommendations specified in the May 9, 2024 memorandum provided by the Conservation Commission, attached as Appendix D. Thirty-seven. Landscaping shall be installed as presented in accordance with the approved plans. Invasive vegetation on the property shall be removed. All installed plant materials shall be maintained in good health. Any material substantially diseased or dead shall be removed, and new planting shall be repaired with similar-sized plants within two years of the final certificate of occupancy. Supplemental plantings should focus on local species. A pollinator garden should be considered for an area such as a leaching field or approximate to an attention basin.
Is this where I put that the applicant said no soil would leave the site?
Oh, we have that later.
In this...
That's a good point.
Would that be in this section?
Not...
No?
It says, further down, it's comply by towns. But it doesn't... It's not that specific, and it should be.
The applicant stated no soil will leave. We should abid in here somewhere.
I mean, that doesn't really relate to landscaping, that.
No.
We'll find a spot.
Somewhere, it says they abide by the towns, but I think it should be strengthened. And it's in the waivers.
They're not waiving that, right?
Yeah, I disagree, Suzanne. I mean, I thought about that specifically, and that's why I didn't waive... I specifically said we're not waiving the earth removal bylaw. I don't think you can make requirements beyond that.
I just... He just said it. I mean, when the applicant's going to give us something, I'm going to take it.
The earth removal bylaw. That's what you have to really govern it by.
Okay.
Anything else on 37? Thirty-eight. Mature trees, particularly those proximate to a budding lot lines and those within the no-touch area designated areas, shall be maintained to the extent possible. Trees straddling the property line shall be assumed to be jointly owned and cannot be damaged or removed without prior written approval of both parties. The limited work line shall be installed and inspected by the site inspector prior to site disturbance to protect areas meant to be undisturbed. The limited work line shall be adjusted to protect root systems of trees intended to be preserved. Peer inspectional engineers shall inspect the limited work line. The applicant shall provide certification from a landscape architect at the project's completion, reporting that all landscaping was installed per plans.
Mr. Chair?
Jared?
Who is the site inspector? Their site inspector or our site inspector?
No, it's defined.
They have one.
It's defined.
Okay, so then we should say inspected by the site inspector. He's not installing it. They're installing it.
No, he's just overseeing.
He's just going to inspect it.
And he hasn't installed it.
I do have something coming up on updates and scheduling for this site inspector person.
Anything else on 38? Thirty-nine. The areas designated as open space on the approved plans shall remain as open space, including a minimum 50-foot-wide strip of the property along the southerly lot line and the easterly lot area with a minimum depth of 330 feet from the easterly lot line. The area to the north of the driveway shall also be maintained in its natural state. All such designated areas shall remain in their natural undisturbed state in perpetuity and may not be separately developable. Limited work lines shall be installed to protect the maximum number of trees possible, and the open space areas shall be permanently staked on-site by granite markers or other permanent markers acceptable to the board. We have a question about need for...
I said granite markers. Noreen had a possible revision there about how... The intent of what I put on about granite markers, I just thinking my old role on a conservation commission, typically when we have a no-disturb zone, we'll mark it with something permanent that isn't a split rail fence that can deteriorate, and then nobody knows what was there. So, that was the only reason I made up granite markers. But I do think you want some designation of it. So, it's up to you, I don't know, again, if you have local customary practice for...
Well, granite or concrete bounds, that's what's normally used.
Granite or concrete.
Yeah, just leave that right in there.
Yeah, leave it as is.
Permanent. Permanent, yeah.
Takes care of it.
Okay, by granite markers or other permanent markers acceptable to the board. I just don't approve like a fence. First of all, the fence would deteriorate, and it stops the wildlife.
Well, this is where the site inspector person will read this.
Permanent's good, that's...
Number 40. The applicant shall provide to the police, building department, and board the name, phone number, and email address of a project contact individual throughout the duration of the construction process to ensure that any questions or concerns, including those of a butter's residence, are timely managed.
You add fire to that.
I was going to say fire, too, yeah. Because that fourth floor, you know?
Forty-one. Final stormwater plans shall be reviewed by the town's stormwater engineering firm to ensure the design meets the 100-year stormwater event. Forty-two. At the applicant's expense, a site inspector will be designated by the town for this project to act in the stead of town engineering from the firms that have been pre-vented by the town due to the town's lack of capacity to conduct oversight inspections. The site inspector will perform or oversee inspections, testing, material approvals, reports, or other construction-related engineering services required. Drywalls, stormwater, purchases, review as-built plans for compliance with approved plans, including compliance with the town's Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standards. Appendix A, and report directly to the town engineering department. The site inspector shall also be responsible to confirm that the applicant properly gains a construction general permit and that required signage and reporting occurs. Copy reporting to the board of hearing division. The applicant shall establish a 53G account through the board for the site inspector.
I would just add NPTES to the construction general permit, just to be clear what you're talking about there.
Add what?
NPTES. N-P-T-E-S, the national...
It's the federal, the national permit construction.
Didn't hear what he said.
Forty-three. The site inspector will be specifically responsible for compliance with the conditions of approval and ensuring adherence to the requirements in the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard conditions for the inspection and approval of the driveway subgrade, gravel base, binder course, curbing, and finish course. At no point shall the contractor construct a roadway surface that was not inspected and approved by the site inspector.
That's where I had questions about updates from the site inspector or some kind of scheduling? Do we want to get, like, put on a schedule to be updated? Or... I don't know how construction's going to go, so I just don't want the person to go away for six months and then go, oh, yeah, I should be, you know...
So, there's a pre-construction meeting, and then what happens is the site inspector is in touch with the contractor, and they will regularly communicate about when it's time to do an inspection, so the site inspector goes out for all those.
And who does the site inspector report to?
Town engineer.
And how does the board know what's going on? Town engineer gives us report?
So, typically, once construction's underway, the board, the zoning board, is out of the process. That's on to other people with that expertise. We have no expertise to evaluate engineering.
They would come back to you.
We don't even need updates or anything?
I mean, they're working for you. If there's an issue, they bring it back to you. And you're picking the site inspector, not the developer.
But we just heard that there is nothing, that we can't compel the town engineer to give us any reports.
The site inspector, you're... They're paying for it, but you're hiring the person out of an approved list.
So, then let me go back and ask a question again. So, the site inspector is reporting to us and the town engineer?
Yes. Well, through them more than us. I wouldn't mind a monthly update.
We do get those. I don't typically forward those out to the board, because, again, once construction is underway, you don't have a role there.
This is an enforcement and compliance issue which is outside of our purview.
Through engineering.
Anything else on 43? Forty-four. The applicant shall contact the town's police department to discuss coordination of traffic during construction. The applicant shall meet with the Falmouth Police Department to determine when or if police details would be required. All police details required by the Falmouth Police Department or per the applicant's own choice shall be paid for by the applicant.
I would just amend that by adding DPW to the town's police department, because typically the DPW has a better idea of what they want for a construction roof. So, I think if we add police department and DPW, we're all good.
Yep.
Good.
Forty-five. Prior to starting work under the comprehensive permit, the applicant and general contractor shall hold a pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner, town engineer, water superintendent, Department of Public Works representative, fire inspector, site inspector, zoning administrator, conservation agent, wastewater superintendent, and board of health agent to review the conditions of approval to ensure compliance with this decision and any town requirements not waived herein.
Did we leave anyone out? Doesn't seem much.
I don't think so.
I don't think we did.
I wouldn't be surprised if you thought of someone.
I will point out, though, the board's edification. By inserting this condition, it has, you know, having those pre-construction meetings, huge improvement in communication, understanding.
That's good.
Good news. Forty-six. Prior to the start of driveway construction, the applicant will file a refundable construction bond with the town if required relative to work being done within the state town right-of-way as shown on the approved plans. Engineering or the site inspector shall be required to inspect the work underway, and engineering shall recommend refunding the bond upon completion in accordance with the approved final plans. Engineering sign-off is required prior to the issuance of any building permits for this project. Construction shall be in accordance with the requirements of town engineering, including the town's 2020 Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard conditions, Appendix A. The applicant shall request inspections in writing at least 24 hours in advance. Reinspection fees shall be per Section 305-5 to the town and as negotiated with the site inspector contract. No construction shall commence until inspection for the below items have been approved. A, the required erosion and sediment controls are installed and approved as shown on a construction plan, including any phasing, and include any required silt setbacks at catch basins on Sandwich Road. B, a stabilized construction entrance and wash station is installed and approved. C, stormwater and infiltration areas are protected, and the protection means are approved. And D, the limited work is demarcated in a field approved. E, a utility easement over the driveway layout shall be provided in a form acceptable to the town at the applicant's cost for town council to review. F, the existing street opening shall be closed or permitted. G, the development shall not access Pitch Pine and Parker Hill during construction or for access related to the development. H, the driveway shall be private in perpetuity and remain privately owned. Maintenance shall be the responsibility of the property owner and include in such documents. Any required utility easements shall be in a form and manner as prescribed by the town.
I think in G, it's Parker Mill Road.
Yes.
And I was wondering if we shouldn't add Harris Hill to that, too, no?
No, you can't get that.
No access.
Frank, what is it, Mill?
Mill.
Yeah.
Good catch, Frank.
You can't get there from Harris Hill.
Can't get there from here. Or there.
Forty-seven. Prior to site activities, the applicant shall provide an update as necessary to the board and building department. A, company affiliation, name, address, and business telephone number, including 24-hour contact information of the construction manager, who shall have overall responsibility for construction activities on site. B, a copy of the municipal lien certificate indicating that all taxes, assessments, and charges due on the premises have been paid. C, certification from the applicant that all required federal, state, and local licenses and permits have been obtained. D, proof that street signage is in place to ensure that emergency personnel can locate the site to provide emergency services to protect and secure the site and construction personnel if determined necessary by the fire department and/or police department. And E, at least 48 hours written notice if activity on the site ceases for longer than 60 days, 48-hour written notice is required prior to restarting work. Forty-eight. The applicant shall ensure a smooth transition between the proposed roadway asphalt and existing asphalt within the town right-of-way by including a one-foot mill and overlay beyond any saw cut for roadway, curbing, sidewalk, or utility trenches. Transition shall be A, saw cut one foot minimum from the edge of any excavation; B, mill one foot minimum from any saw cut and minimum depth the existing asphalt top course; C, the binder course shall be laid between saw cuts; D, the top course shall be laid between milling extents. Forty-nine. The ADA ramps in Sandwich Road shall have removable tactile panels installed, and shop drawings for such panels shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works for approval before installation. Fifty. Applicant shall conform to the relevant federal NPDES and state stormwater permit requirements as well as the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act prior to commencement of construction activities, and the applicant shall submit proof of NPDES, a construction general permit submission and approval. Fifty-one. During construction, the applicant shall conform to all local, state, and federal laws regarding noise, odor, vibration, dust, and blocking of town roads. The applicant shall at all times use all reasonable means to minimize inconvenience to residents in the general area. Fifty-two. During construction, at the end of each workday, the applicant shall cause all erosion control measures to be in place, shall cause all materials and equipment to be secured. Upon completion of all work on-site and prior to as-built approval, all debris and construction materials shall be removed and disposed of in accordance with state laws and regulations. Fifty-three. No tree stumps or other demolition or construction debris shall be buried on the property. All tree stumps shall either be ground or removed from the property. No burning is allowed on the property. Fifty-four. The applicant shall install sprinklers for fire protection in all buildings in compliance with general laws, Chapter 148, Section 26I, which requires a sprinkler system designated per NFPA code and the Massachusetts State Fire Code. All fire protection systems shall comply with the state building code and any amendments Fifty-five. All staging areas, including without limitation, parking areas for construction personnel, portable toilets, temporary work facilities, et cetera, shall be on the property. 30 days following the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy, construction staging areas shall be cleared and completed in accordance with final plans. Fifty-six. If construction activity ceases for longer than 60 days, then written notice shall be provided by the applicant to the building commissioner at least 48 hours before resuming work. Pursuant to 780 CMR 33, safeguards during construction, the building commissioner may require that any foundation, trench, structure, equipment, or other hazard be secured as necessary, in his opinion, including, but not limited to, installation of fencing and/or filling of trenches. Is this one satisfying?
Yeah.
Told you it was coming. Fifty-seven. To the extent that landscaping or other items are not completed prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide the town with a satisfactory surety instrument in the form of cash, bond, letter of credit, or a tri-party agreement that shall not expire unless and until it is satisfactorily replaced or released, and in an amount to be determined by the board in consultation with the town boards and officials and other consultants based upon the applicant's reasonable estimate of the cost to complete such landscaping work. Project surety shall be held by the town treasurer until the treasurer is notified by the board to release the surety. Requests to reduce the surety may be submitted as the work progresses and shall include the amount of the requested reduction, a list of work outstanding, and a cost estimate of the same. The amount of the surety retained shall be based on the cost estimate of the remaining work. The surety shall be fully released upon completion of the landscape work. Fifty-eight. If after a period of two growing seasons, any of the installed landscaping has failed to thrive, the applicant shall replace said failed landscaping materials to the satisfaction of the board.
Good question, Ian. Do we also... Didn't the Conservation Commission weigh in?
This is their normal two years they require.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, they require two years also.
But is it to the satisfaction of the board or to Conco?
They don't have jurisdiction here.
Okay.
Any other edits or suggestions? Fifty-nine. All inspections outlined in the town subdivision regulation shall be performed and reports submitted to the board. All work to be inspected shall be completed prior to the inspection, and reinspection fees shall be required for incomplete work unless previously coordinated with the inspector in writing. Sixty. The applicant shall pay all reasonable fees imposed for the purpose of inspecting and monitoring the compliance of the project's construction with the terms of this permit. Local bylaw requirements not waived by this permit and other permits and approvals issued with respect to this project for which the town has monitoring responsibility. Any outstanding fees owed for consulting services incurred by the board before this decision was rendered shall be paid forthwith and before any building permit issues. Thereafter, no occupancy permit shall issue if an outstanding fee bill is 30 days overdue. Sixty-one. All utilities and water construction and materials shall be constructed consistent with the final plans and otherwise in accordance with the town of Falmouth requirements, except as otherwise shown on the final plans. The construction of all water infrastructure shall comply with any of the rules and regulations of the Department of Public Works in effect as of the date of this decision. Sixty-two. Applicant has submitted to the fire chief and Department of Public Works a hydrant flow test demonstrating the water system can deliver adequate fire flow at static pressure to the project. Applicant has also submitted to the fire department an overlay diagram showing the ability of the fire apparatus to enter, maneuver, reverse direction, and negotiate at each road, intersection, turn, egress, exit, and dead-end feature based on dimensions and vehicle specifications that were provided by the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department. Fire lanes that remain open and overhead clearance of no less than 13 feet 6 inches is to be maintained to provide apparatus access. Upon completion, the project shall provide adequate and uninterrupted fire protection and water supply to the development. No combustible mulch shall be in contact with structures and consider landscape design in accordance with firewise design principles. in accordance with firewise design principles.
Two questions for me. You can go first.
Go ahead.
Me first? Um, the, has, have, has the fire department responded on this new plan?
No.
Well, yeah, I, I, well.
Yeah, O'Malley did.
I don't remember seeing one. I thought it was from the original plan.
No, I think Craig O'Malley did, right?
I looked at that, Suzanne. I thought of, um, I thought there was an email.
There was.
There was.
Was there? Okay.
Yeah. You know, I know from, um, bear with me one second. Not after the close of the public hearing, before.
Well, it would have been the May.
Always pull the big ones. I look for them myself, fire, police. And there was a email.
I think the flow test was done before the new plan, but I don't think that's going to make a difference even though there's more buildings.
Pipes didn't change.
It didn't change.
Size of the pipes didn't change.
Yeah, just the more buildings, I guess, would make a difference, yeah.
Uh, we have a last letter dated May 7th from the fire department.
Craig O'Malley, right?
Is that new plan time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it? Okay.
So, here's the other part is they're going to have to review everything before they sign off.
Okay.
So I think you're covered.
I'm covered. Okay. Thank you for looking up.
Oh, there is below is a reply from the fire prevention officer.
May 7th?
Oh, this was older. Right, that's not on the Plan B.
But like Norine said, we'll be covered. Okay.
Firewise, is that a term of art? Is that a?
Firewise. The question is firewise. Is that a term of art? Is that's?
Federal Fire Protection Standard. I don't know what firewise.
I don't know what that is either.
I got that from your conditions.
Oh, I'm not sure. I, I'm not familiar with that term.
I am not either.
That's obviously the standard they go by.
Say accepted design principles.
Yeah. Yeah, accepted design.
Okay. I would just leave it there.
Um, prior to going on to the next condition, I would recommend a five-minute break.
Yeah, do that right at, oh, 8:32, all right. Take a five-minute recess.
Is ready.
Sorry. Sixty-three. Projects shall be served by municipal water at the applicant's sole expense in accordance with the Falmouth Department of Public Works requirements. This decision grants the right to connect to the municipal water system, but prior to the issuance of a water connection permit, the applicant shall submit detailed construction plans for review and approval of the Department of Public Works so as to comply with the DPW technical requirements. The plans shall show size and materials for water mains and fire service lines, valves, fittings, bends, hydrants, and related pertinences for the proposed water main layout. Additionally, the applicant shall coordinate with the Falmouth Water Department to schedule an inspection to oversee the construction, chlorination, and pressure testing of all water mains and services. The applicant is responsible for paying any fees associated with the inspected services. Upon completion of the water main construction, the applicant shall submit copies of water main ASBIL plans and service connection tie cards to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division, one copy, and Water Division, one copy. The Department of Public Works Water Division will not sign off final occupancy certificates until the ASBIL plans have been submitted. Sixty-four. All outdoor lighting shall comply with the town's dark sky requirements and utilize LED light bulbs. Sixty-five. The applicant shall be permanently responsible for the repair and maintenance of all onsite ways, sidewalks, utilities, drainage structures, drainage basins, site lighting, and landscaping, and shall be responsible for all trash collection, landscape maintenance, plowing, sanding, and snow removal, ensuring that snow is stored in the designated locations. The town shall not take ownership of or have any legal responsibility for the operation, maintenance, repair, or replacement of A. The entire onsite stormwater management system. B. All water connections, lines, and equipment required from the public way to the property. C. The entire onsite sewage management system, including the WWTF, and all connections, lines, each leach fields, and other features related thereto. And D. The sidewalks, driveways, roads, utilities, site lighting, landscaping, gas, if applicable, electric, telephone, and cable systems of all other infrastructure.
Can I put recycling in there again after trash collection?
Sure.
Consistency, I guess.
Any objections?
No.
No.
Sixty-six. Prior to application for a building permit, the applicant shall file with the town of Falmouth Engineering Department for a stormwater management permit registration. The final drainage plans and calculations shall be reviewed by the Department of Public Works, include input from the town's peer review engineering firm, CEI, prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Who put this in? You, Norine? Is this your paragraph?
Do you like it?
Guess who depends?
I'm okay with it. Want to add that paragraph then?
I think it came from, I think Norine had it and it came from the engineering.
All right, so we'll add the language that's in there.
Yeah.
The applicant will provide a long-term operation and maintenance plan, stormwater O&amp;M plan, and a stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWPP, with the following conditions. A. Stormwater management conditions. One. Prior to starting any site work, the SWPP shall be provided to the contractors during construction, and a copy must be kept on site during construction. Two. The applicant shall comply with the SWPP during construction. Three. The applicant shall protect any subsurface infiltration system during construction in order to prevent a reduction in the long-term infiltration capacity of the soil. Once construction is complete, the system shall be cleaned of any silt and sediment. Removal and replacement of soil shall be completed to make certain that the infiltration rate of the soil is met. Use of silt stacks within the proposed catch basin shall be used during construction. Four. Post-development impervious areas shall be consistent with the impervious area shown on the design plans that were used to analyze and size the stormwater management system. Five. The ASBIL conditions shall closely match the drainage areas shown on the post-development final plans. Six. Any imported fill shall have the same drainage characteristics as existing site soils for the which the stormwater analysis and design are based. B. O&amp;M plan conditions. One. The final stormwater O&amp;M plan shall be filed with the board, Department of Public Works, prior to substantial completion of construction. Two. In the event that the applicant or its successor fails to maintain the stormwater management system in accordance with such guidelines for operation and maintenance, the notice the applicant or successor in the failure to reasonably cure, the town may perform necessary maintenance repairs, and the applicant or successor hereby authorizes the town to enter the property for this purpose. In such an event, the applicant or successor shall reimburse the town for any and all expenses associated therewith. In the event of non-payment, the town may place a lien on the property and any improvements thereupon. All costs incurred by the town in connection with the performance of such required maintenance of the property shall be reimbursed by the applicant or its successors. The town in 30 days have received the town's invoice for such costs, which shall constitute a municipal charge or fee pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Sections 57 and 58. Number three. Stormwater and O&amp;M plans shall be combined into a letter-sized, bound document and provided to the property owner and operator prior to the final certificate of occupancy. The condition or approval also requires compliance with document in perpetuity. This document shall include a site, a simplified site plan that would highlight the location of the various best management practices. Any additions under this particular section?
I'm just noting to Norine, I say GL, chapter 40, and in other places, we just want a consistent throw, so I just took the M out of there.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
We're in Massachusetts, so GL.
Conditions prior to building permit. Number sixty-eight. Certified plot plan, including lot dimensions, building dimensions, and setbacks for each structure, including the address, as assigned by engineering, shall match architectural plans within the approved plans and shall be provided to the board in order to receive a sign-off for a building permit.
Question?
Yep, Jerry.
The standards as to what size that plan must be, 1 to 20, 1 to 40? Scale, I should.
Come again?
What, what scale should these, should these plans be?
We say 1 to 40 later.
Oh, we say 1 to 40 later?
We say 1 to 40, though only on landscaping plans.
Only on landscaping?
I believe so, yeah. I mean, we have to get to that. I, I, I wouldn't typically put the requirement in there for when the building inspector is looking at that.
You know, it just needs to be of sufficient size that it's readable. And I'm sure if something's too small, that will be pointed out, but, you know, I think we have a large property and you specify a particular scale, there may not be enough paper to, yeah.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Sixty-nine. The applicant shall, excuse me, the applicant shall provide a plan to demonstrate that the affordable units are equitably representative of the unit size and that the locations are properly distributed throughout the development.
And I would just add, subject to the affordability of the subsizing.
Seventy. All units shall have the same exterior appearance and construction quality and be in conformance with the approved plans.
There you go, Tony. You want your vinyl siding?
There's absolutely nothing. What? No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Seventy-one. Final ASBILs for all structures shall be provided to the board and shall demonstrate compliance with the approved plans and all terms and conditions of this decision.
You know, actually going back.
Back to seventy?
Seventy-one would actually be a good place to add that.
To put as vinyl, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you know, shall have the same exterior appearance and construction quality and be in conformance with the approved plans.
There shall be no vinyl siding.
No vinyl siding shall be used.
Conditions set here and?
Yeah, but I wasn't sure where exactly we were putting that condition.
Good place as any, isn't it?
Yeah. Speaks to exterior appearance.
Yeah. Why not just, it's a good place as any.
It's a good place to put it, that's what I'm saying.
Add it.
Seventy.
As amended.
Is AZAC considered vinyl, though?
No.
No? No.
It's composite.
Yeah, okay.
It's plastic. It's plastic, it's composite, yes.
Anything else on seventy?
I just don't know how we're adding, it, it should be added to seventy-one. I just don't know exactly what you want to add.
Seventy-one. Final ASBILs for all structures shall be provided to the board and shall.
No, Jim, sorry, I'm sorry. Seventy-one is where you want to.
He wants to add it in now. Um, let's think of.
On the vinyl?
Yeah.
If you go back, Jim, to seventy.
Seventy, okay. All units shall have the same exterior appearance and construction quality and be in conformance with the approved plans.
Exterior material shall not include vinyl or similar materials?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Isn't, isn't AZAC PVC?
What?
Isn't AZAC PVC?
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Which is polyvinyl chloride. So, in, in effect, you're limiting.
AZAC's just a name everybody uses.
Yeah, but it's PVC, and that's vinyl. Polyvinyl chloride is what PVC is.
Just leave the word vinyl. I would just use the word vinyl.
You wait and see what they really put on this building and.
Not vinyl or similar products. I, I was going to add, exterior construction materials shall not include vinyl or similar products.
Great.
I mean, it's a modicum of good faith, you're assuming, and, you know, so if they come up with something that is really vinyl or PFAS or something, it.
I was just saying, AZAC is vinyl. PVC. Polyvinyl chloride.
I think vinyl or similar products is fine.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, it encompasses, not that.
What do you want, Mark?
No vinyl siding. I mean, makes it simple.
Exterior construction materials shall not include vinyl or similar products.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but AZAC is a similar, it's PVC, which is polyvinyl chloride.
Yeah, or that's a similar product to vinyl, which shall not be used.
But AZAC is good. I don't want to limit, I don't want to, um.
Eliminate the use.
Eliminate the use of AZAC, it would make no sense.
No, because all these products would, I don't know what they're going to use, but, I mean, a lot of this is, is used. It's just the vinyl siding, we don't want.
That's what I meant, but similar products would encompass AZAC, which we don't want to do.
Exterior construction materials should not include vinyl siding.
There you go. There you go, as simple as that.
All right.
Boy, that we struggled with that.
Yeah, I know.
That's how much we all like vinyl, huh?
Seventy-one. Final ASBILs for all structures shall be provided to the board and shall demonstrate compliance with the approved plans and all terms and conditions of this decision. Now seventy-two?
I think the notes got changed based on.
All right. Got it. Yep.
Seventy-two. The applicant shall provide a bus stop shelter at 375 Sandwich Road for the development. Seventy-three. The applicant shall provide.
Wait, wait, let's write as shown on plan, so they don't move it around.
It's going to be at the road, though, there's only so many places you can put it at the road.
Let's just put it where it's shown.
As indicated on the final plan?
Yeah.
As shown on the approved plans.
Yeah.
Anything else? Seventy-three. The applicant shall provide a sidewalk along the northerly side of the driveway from Sandwich Road to the entry feature proximate to the clubhouse, and a sidewalk along the full front into the premises along Sandwich Road. Sidewalks shall be separated from the road by either a grass strip or vertical curb for pedestrian safety. The applicant should consider looping the sidewalk around the residential buildings to provide more access.
Can I just bring up something? Again, that's, that's passive, should consider. Either we want it or we don't want it.
Shall consider, or no, shall.
It says shall, doesn't it?
Take the consider out.
Shall.
Yeah.
Applicant shall loop the sidewalk.
On the last sentence, shall, yep.
Did you hear that?
Yep.
Shall. I mean, you're, you're causing more pavement, you're requiring more pavement.
Good point.
We're not concerned with lack coverage of.
Well, is this a safety issue?
I would think.
It's also a convenience issue.
Convenience issue, I mean.
They can't walk around too.
You want to get into semi-permeable concrete?
Nope. I mean, I, you know. People in wheelchairs tend to get around.
Take up plenty of, take up plenty of open space there. We're not concerned with that.
Okay, got it. Shall loop. Seventy-four. Seventy-four, permanent monumentation shall be placed at lot corners to delineate boundaries as approved by town engineering. Seventy-five, construction shall be in accordance with any requirements of town engineering, including items specifically delineated in the referral. Seventy-six, stormwater must be managed on-site. No increase in stormwater runoff is allowed. Construction process shall comply with the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions as found on the town's engineering webpage and attached to this document as Appendix A. The board shall be the permitting authority. Engineering sign-off is required prior to the issuance of any building permit for this project. Seventy-seven, all access holes for any septic and pump chambers shall be brought to finished grade. Seventy-eight, prior to the installation of any stormwater leaching facilities, the site inspector shall observe the bottom of the excavation and the applicant's engineers shall verify that the elevation is a minimum of two feet above estimated seasonal high groundwater. Leach pits shall be installed on a gravel base bed. Seventy-nine, final addressing and unit designation shall be as provided by town engineering and the assessor. The applicant shall ensure that all buildings and units are properly posted with the address for Section 99-1 prior to issuance of the final building department's sign-off certificate of occupancy. Eighty, best efforts are requested to maintain the soil on the premises versus removal, but in any event, the applicant shall comply with the town's earth removal by law.
Is that our right? Finally, we're talking about your...
He said, "No soil will leave the site."
Alright.
Right to me.
I...
To us.
That soil is valuable. I...
Yep.
It's harvested too much and too often. I don't think requiring it stays on-site is a bad thing at all. That's farmland. I mean, it has been for 150 years.
Yeah, we can't just have best efforts. He said...
Best efforts, who's gonna just, no, no is very, in my mind.
Did you change your amendment, or are you...
Yeah, absolutely.
Soil shall not be removed from the premises and the applicant shall comply with the town's earth removal by law.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Eighty-one, prior to the issuance of a building permit for a building or unit, the applicant is required to submit to Mass Housing a request for final approval of the project in accordance with the Comprehensive Permit Rule 760 CMR 56.04 and the guidelines, including Part III concerning affirmative fair marketing and residence selection. Copy of the final approval letter should be submitted to the board. Eighty-two, any deviation, no matter how minor, from plans submitted and approved shall be submitted to the board for approval prior to implementation of said change. The zoning administrator may make a determination as to whether the changes are minor in nature and can be approved administratively or whether they require a determination from the board pursuant to 760 CMR 56.0511. The applicant is required to provide, one, regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants, and, two, an affordable housing deed rider specifying that affordable units shall remain affordable in perpetuity. These documents shall be provided to the board to ensure compliance with the comprehensive permit and reviewed by town council prior to the issuance of any building permit and subsequently recorded at the Registry of Deeds in Barnstable. The applicant is a limited dividend organization, is limited in its profits under General Law's Chapter 40B, and any excess profit shall be paid by the applicant and distributed as required by the subsidizing agency in accordance with applicable law, regulations, and guidelines. Eighty-five, final lottery agent, lottery plan, and marketing plan shall be submitted to the board prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Eighty-five, should the applicant seek to phase construction, such information must be reviewed and approved by the building commissioner. Final building plans must match the dimensions of the certified plot plan. Eighty-six, upon DEP approval of a wastewater treatment facility, the applicant shall provide the final dimensions, sighting, and elevation details to the board, including final plans depicting the stubs for possible future connections from existing off-site properties.
Can we go back to eighty, just for a question?
Number eighty?
Number eighty?
Yep.
Are we, is, no removal of soil on the premises, are we talking about topsoil or subsoil? I mean, they're gonna be digging huge holes here.
Excavated soil. Excavated soils.
Well, what are we talking about? It says soil, that covers a lot.
Topsoil is, is what we're concerned with.
Well, we should say topsoil.
Yes, that's, you're correct. Because nobody cares about, nobody cares about the sand.
No, that's a good, that's a good snag, Frank.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Topsoil.
Okay.
Yep.
Is topsoil sufficient, please, Frank?
Yeah.
Yes. What is topsoil?
That's the good stuff, the dark stuff.
I was gonna say the good stuff.
No, 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 no. Is it defined someplace?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah.
I had one other question related to that. Does your earth removal by law contemplate removal of soil from a site?
Yes, if it's incidental to construction.
Yeah.
Then I would say, topsoil shall not be removed from the premises and applicant shall otherwise comply with the town's earth removal by law, because...
That's probably, yeah.
Okay.
But, I mean, if we just eliminate the topsoil, they can do what they want with the rest. I mean...
Topsoil shall not be removed from the premises and the applicant shall otherwise comply with the town's...
Yeah.
Conditions prior to certificate of occupancy, number eighty-seven, the final certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until all required site work, including landscaping, drainage, or other improvements, are completed. The applicant may request that the board consider a bond for the value of incomplete work to ensure that the work is completed in accordance with the approved plans. Eighty-eight, any damage to Sandwich Road during the construction process shall be repaired to state-town standards at the expense of the applicant. Eighty-nine, building numbers, units shall be posted by the applicant in accordance with Falmouth Local Regulation, Section 99-1. A fixing of legible numbers required as formally assigned by the town engineering with the building permit application and approved by the fire prevention inspector prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. The applicant shall also post any appropriate signage as approved by the Department of Public Works.
So, I guess I just had a question there or comment there, that within the development itself, I don't think that the town has control within the development because it's a private driveway regarding any signage, but I don't know if people had comments about that.
Are we talking about building identification signage?
Well, no. So, you're, you obviously have to have addresses posted, but I guess the question is if there's signage for circulation or...
Handicapped signs?
One-way or, well, no, handicapped obviously will be according to whatever is required, right? So, you know, if you've got a designated spray-painted spot or signage to indicate that you've got a handicap spot, but, I mean, many developments have stop signs, flow, traffic flow, whatever else it is, and I think that's not within the town's jurisdiction, but...
Well, what about just per building codes?
I don't know if building code addresses...
ADA requirements.
Yeah, ADA.
ADA.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, what, parking?
Handicap spaces have to be...
Well, this is more like for emergency service purposes.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Thank you. This is a closed hearing, we're not taking testimony.
Any comment, George?
No. I didn't, I got this one from Noreen, so I'm not, I mean, we can work on it further, think about it.
The, um, the units have to be numbered, so the fire department can, and that's a code.
It's 99-1.
Maybe we just remove the last statement? Because I think, other than a stop sign as you exit the driveway, I don't think the town has any control over interior signage. So, maybe just strike that last sentence.
If they don't have it, then this sentence means nothing, nothing anyway.
Because we've already said you have to post a stop sign at the entrance. So, I, I just think there's nothing specific within the development that the DEP can, I mean, the DPW can require signage.
Yeah, they're just looking at the building numbers and you...
So, take out the applicant shall, that whole list?
Yeah, just the last sentence, I was right.
And they approve the signage, because if they go with an emergency vehicle, they need to know the address.
Yeah, that has to be.
So, I agree with Noreen. It, it covers that concept without that sentence.
Yeah.
Anything else? Number ninety, certified as-built plans shall be provided to the building department, copy to the board for review for conformance to the approved plans prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. To be confirmed by the site inspector. The as-built plans shall be an overlay of the site plan with the addition of the proposed stormwater management system, structures, and pipes added to serve as the appropriate base plan plus water lines and septic components. Any deviations from the approved plans shall be clearly shown in red line over the base plan, which should be faded back for clarity. The as-built shall be certified by both a licensed surveyor and a registered engineer that work was performed in conformance with the approved plans and permits.
Does, quick question. Does that include, when you say plans, are you talking about profile plans for utilities, underground utilities, stormwater drain systems? You know how they'll do in subdivision plan the profiles?
Yeah, I, I mean, you can add further detail. I think as-built covers it, but it's the as-built are what somebody would look at in 30 years.
But it's a private way, you mentioned this, Noreen, it's a private way in not necessarily, where are these plans gonna be stored? If they're in the engineering department, they want profiles, don't they?
Right, but, you know, all these plans are available electronically as well, so, you know, storage.
Okay, I'm just bringing it up, alright.
Do we say that someplace? Excuse me. All the plans have to be electronically available.
No, they, they won't accept them unless they...
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, everything's electronic.
Ninety-one, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall enter into a monitoring agreement to be reviewed by town council. All costs associated with the monitoring shall be borne by the applicant. A copy of all final, excuse me, financial information by the monitoring agent shall be provided to the housing coordinator annually. Ninety-two, the applicant shall provide onsite management for move-in and out and associated vehicles. Includes conditions, are there ones that other people want to add or discuss?
On ninety-one, I, I just sort of thought about it for the first time. Usually you want to have a, you want to take over as monitoring agent, not the board, but you want the town to be able to take over as monitoring agent when their construction financing agreement is up. Because that's when mass housing will come out, so I would rec, I don't know yet what I want to add there, but I would add a sentence, basically to the effect that the town will take over as monitoring agent when the subsidizing agency is out.
Well, the town may want to require that someone else undertake that role, only because, I guess, the question is, who within the town is going to have the capacity to manage that?
Town or towns designate, I guess.
Yeah, we, we want it in there, though, somehow, because you do want the ability to monitor it, because they don't, they'll, subsidizing agency will really be in the picture for a limited amount of time till the construction financing is done, so you do want that.
Do verbiage on that, you will?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you know what I'm saying? In other words, you want the ability, the town wants the ability to monitor it once there's no formal monitoring agent.
Or to select a monitor.
Right.
Because we can't do it.
No, well, typically a town would be able to monitor it. They would have somebody that serves as a monitoring agent.
Or their designee? Noreen's saying that we don't.
Yeah, I, I think right now there's not infrastructure for that.
But the way Jim just said it's...
May need, may need to be farmed out to another party to provide reporting to the town, so...
So, you could put town or designee, like Jim just said.
Yeah.
That covers it both.
Yeah, that's either or.
Yeah, right. It works.
Costs to be borne by the applicant, or they're just reporting?
I'll write something in there. I mean, I'm putting something like, the town shall have the right to continue with a monitoring agent, something like that. You just want it reserved in there.
Sure.
I mean, you will see it on the, when, when they come back in for the building permit, you'll see the regulatory agreement and we'll have a monitoring provision in there. Typically, it will provide for that, the transfer is over the town, but you do want it in the permit.
Do we want to reserve that Mr. Pucci would review those documents or consistency?
I had it with, by town council, it's...
Okay.
Council prime, that's principally done it. They're all the same anyways.
Okay.
I mean, you might want to ask again. I don't know if they heard, if there's anyone else?
So, before we get into waivers, the waiver requests, grants, or denials, are there other conditions that the board wants to discuss? You done it?
I think we've talked about everything in one form or another.
You guys all set? Alright. You guys all set? On the left.
Waivers, number one.
Make your comment that all of the sections refer to the old zoning bylaw, not the new. And, um, how did that happen?
That will be amended.
Which, which are you referring to?
In the waivers, it refers to the old zoning bylaw, not the new one.
Oh, okay. So, those waivers are based on what the developer provided to us?
Well, we have to correct it to make sure that we're reciting the right zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah, I had no idea that that was the case. I was just going...
I didn't even look.
We just changed our bylaw from an old one to a new one and recodified it, so all the numbers are different. And they have to reflect the new one, because the new one applies to this project.
Yeah, we'll go back to the date of the filing.
Alright.
No, it was, they came out before that.
Why don't we make an administrative change in the decision? We could put the old, or just refer to it, like we did for a while, formally...
Yeah.
Right, or we can add what it's now...
The current bylaw, formally, you know, 240-34.
We can just sort of add.
That's now 240, 12.4.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, just do it that way, that's perfect.
I can handle it by footnote, perhaps.
Yeah, by footnote.
Even better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, yeah, just, that's even, that's...
Footnote at the bottom would be...
Let's not reinvent the wheel, footnote, this is based on the previous version. That's legally defensible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they do transfer over, the numbers just change.
Alright, number one, the board grants a waiver of Article VII Agricultural Districts, Section 240-34, to allow a multifamily residence in the agricultural district. Grants a waiver of Article 14 Dimensional Regulation, Section 240-66, to allow five residential buildings on one lot as depicted on the approved plans, and grants a waiver of Article 14 Dimensional Regulation, Section 240, Section 70, only to the extent needed to allow a maximum building height of 50 feet to the top of the parapet and 53 feet to the elevator slash mechanical penthouse as shown on the approved plans.
Do we add the clubhouse in on there? And that other storage building?
None of them are...
They're not gonna be too...
They're not gonna exceed that, so it's not necessary.
Those heights are not gonna exceed this.
Number two, the board also grants a waiver of Article 22, Sections 240-106 and 240-108, only to the extent needed to allow the proposed banking of 27 of the required 517 parking spaces as shown on the approved plans, and also grants a waiver of Article 22, Section 240-108.1, so that a permanent design onsite loading zone shall not be required.
I, whatever. I disagree with both of those. I, I don't, I, I think that they're gonna be renting to the kind of people that are prone to have two cars and maybe even three. And with Amazon and all the deliveries that are made now, I mean, my neighbor across the street from me has Amazon stopping four and five times a day at his house.
Make a motion, then we'll have discussion.
Yeah, well, I'd motion that we don't approve this.
A motion to deny number two, the waiver of number two. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, now, discussion, go right ahead.
I, I, I think that, that, that the amount of cars that they're gonna be in this place, I, I think they're gonna be upscale, upwardly mobile people or whatever, I just, I, I, I don't think the banking is, is, um, necessary. I, I think they're gonna find that they're gonna be short anyhow, and then, I mean, how many people don't see all the Amazon trucks out there? I mean, 300 units? I mean, and I'm not exaggerating, my neighbor gets three and four and five trips a day with that Amazon truck. I mean, to not have a place, I mean, you're gonna have three and four and five Amazon trucks in there any one time.
Yeah.
And, you know, other deliveries, I, I, I don't think either one of these are warranted. I'd motion that we strike both, or I already did, and it was second.
You had a second of it?
I did.
So, the denial of this waiver would require a loading zone and that the 517 spaces.
Right.
Any other discussion?
I worried about the loading zone itself, because Phil showed it was gonna be like slapped up at 11 o'clock when someone called in to make an appointment to move in, and he said he was gonna shut the road down, and it was gonna take a few hours, and I was concerned about like fire access and I, I just, it concerned me.
And, and the plan was to take spaces away from tenants for a short period?
Yeah, it was.
I, I don't see it as working for, for the want of one loading, like I said, the Amazon trucks are gonna be fighting over this spot as it is.
The Amazon trucks going up by the rotary, I think.
I think the management company, this is something, I mean, I don't approve of the, I think we should leave this in. I think we're making much more of a, much more concern about this than we know about, that's, so, the management company, that's their responsibility to manage things. I mean, Amazon trucks pack where they want to pack anyways.
By taking spaces away from tenants and...
I, it's...
I think the plan was unworkable. It's a minor detail.
Frank, your feelings?
I, uh, we talked about this at length, and there's gonna be an initial period when a lot of people are moving in, but once everybody's moved in, the loading zone's probably gonna get used only a few times a year. So, um, I'm not sure it's really necessary, and it was also testified that most people are gonna be using a pickup truck or a van to move in. Not a tractor-trailer or a Mayflower van, so I think it's okay.
This, not the motion, this as written.
Right.
Alright, you convinced me. Alright, you convinced me, Frank.
So, the motion right now is to, would be to deny the waiver request made by Mr. Fineran, seconded by Ms. Murphy, and a vote-
How about in relation to the bank and the parking spaces?
It's still a motion.
Still a motion, basically not to deny waiver number two. I believe that was the motion that was seconded, so. Okay, vote, an affirmative vote would be to deny the waiver. Anyone in favor of denying this waiver, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. As, any further amendments or discussion?
I still think that the banking of the parking spaces is-
Why can't we split that up?
We can.
Why don't you make a motion and split it up, Mark?
Yeah, I make a motion that we remove the banking of the twenty-seven parking spaces.
Do we have to reconsider the thing we just?
No, because it's a different, it's a different motion.
Different motion, correct.
So the motion, just to clarify, for may, will be striking the language, the board also grants a waiver of Article twenty-two, sections two forty dash one oh six, two forty one oh eight, only to the extent needed to allow the proposed banking of twenty-seven of the required five hundred and seventeen parking spaces, so just going to-
And I'd just like to add that if those parking spaces were there, it would make the plan as it exists much more workable. You'd have twenty-seven other spaces for trucks to park in when things are coming in and out, and Amazon trucks. I mean, as I say, I think these are expensive places, these people are much more likely to have two and even three vehicles. I think all these parking spaces will be used.
Is there a second to the proposed amendment?
Second again.
Any further discussion?
What is it again?
We're just striking the banked parking requirements, the waiver requesting banked parking for twenty-seven spaces. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Four to one, alright, so twenty-seven, we're striking, we're not granting a waiver concerning banked parking. The waiver of loading zone remains. Additional changes? Number two, and the three. The board grants a waiver of Article twenty-four, section two forty dash one one six, to allow landscape plans at a scale of one inch equals forty feet. Grants waivers of Article thirty-nine and Article two, section three hundred dash nine, for site plan review by the planning report, and grants waivers of Article three, sections one eighty-four dash twelve and one eighty-four dash thirteen, requiring sign review, committee review of signage.
I think I left one of your sections out there, Article two, section two forty one ninety-one.
Just going to add that?
Two forty one ninety-one?
I think so. I was just going by the spreadsheet.
Fine. So again, this is just, we're the permitting authority, and we're just allowing to submit plans that are more condensed. Any discussion? Number four, to the extent not specifically granted and stated above, all other requested waivers are denied, including but not limited to compliance with the requirements in the coastal pond overlay district, Article twenty-one, section two forty dash nine seven, the requirements concerning tree removal in Articles twenty-four, section two forty dash one one seven, landscape performance standards, Article twenty-four, section two forty dash one one nine, earth moving regulations, section two forty dash one fifty, stormwater management rules and regulations, and all performance standards applicable to subdivision roadways set forth in the town subdivision regulations as conditioned above, but for relief from the roadway length limitation to allow the roadway length depicted on the approved plans.
Yeah, just one caveat on this one too, is the landscaping, the applicant requested some relief, you know, so I just wanted to remind you of that. You know, they, they were pretty specific about waivers that they want, not the one to forty-
Scale.
Scale, but like certain performance standards they were seeking relief from. And I did not have, you know, as much of a handle on those landscape plans, so I just denied the waivers. I mean, that's what this provides. But I, you know, I know some of the comments I received from board members had like detail about what they wanted to see in the landscaping, and, you know, these get very complicated because they have designated plantings and they're very detailed, the plan, so I just wanted to call that to your attention, that the applicant had been seeking relief from that. So I just left it that you're not waiving any landscaping bylaws.
Question for clarification. At the end, we talk about, and all performance standards applicable to subdivision roadways is set forth in the town subdivision regulations. They don't have a road anymore, and it's not a subdivision, so should we just put in if applicable?
Well, what the intent of that was, and I'm open to revising it, was Jim had noted that he wanted it built to standards, so you're building a subdivision roadway. But I, you know, when writing that, I understand your point, it's not a subdivision roadway, but what I was trying to get at there is that it will comply with your performance standards for subdivision roadways, you know, the pavement depth and the material and all that stuff.
That's what I thought we meant, but-
That's what engineering requests, I think.
No, right, but it-
Perhaps make that a little clearer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Subdivision stand, uh-
Well, the driveway will be built to subdivision standards, even though it's not a subdivision.
And for jurisdiction too, I should note, the regulations, comprehensive permit regulations specifically allow you to think about subdivision standards even though it's not a subdivision roadway, so you're not out of bounds at all.
And let's just make it clear.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Sub, clarification, anything else?
I'm clarified.
I'm clarified to clarify.
Number five, to the extent the approved plans require waivers not specifically allowed or denied above, the applicant must return to the board for review under the notice of project change procedures stated in seven sixty CMR fifty-six point oh five eleven. Are there other findings, waivers, conditions that we need to go back to?
I still wanted the date on when the last plan was submitted somewhere, I think.
So we actually did go through the plans, and we do have them captured in here, and the only correction, this is on your-
Page-
Page seventeen.
Seventeen?
Seven. Seven. Seven.
Seven?
Seven, yes. So midway in the page, we just need to correct, there's a date of October ten, and it was listed as twenty twenty-four, but it should be twenty twenty-three.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
But other than that, she did double check that all of those are the current plans, the current references.
And June thirteenth twenty-four was option B?
Yes.
Yep, those plans laid out there are to plan now.
Okay.
Yeah, it would behoove you though not to add work that you do look at them, because I assume the board members have looked at what you're considering to be the approved plans, and they did come by link, you know, so, and it's not like just that overall presentation, it's a further detailed plan somewhere. So you want to be comfortable that what you're approving is in there, and what you think you're approving is in there, because things like the designated open space are on those plans, and, you know, landscaping and architecture, those are what you're approving, those are what you're going to, you know, the building officials are going to be looking at in the end to say, alright, do these final plans conform with this?
You say that, sir?
And I should note, I mean, that's the way it's always done, you know, you just want to be comfortable that, of what it is that you consider the approved plans, that they're specified in there, and then those final detailed plans are going to have to conform with those concepts that you've approved. Building envelope, open space areas, the sidewalk, the roadway, the, you know, lady asked about four-story buildings, the fifty feet, the fifty-three feet, all that is on those. And if you need more time, you should really feel comfortable, you know, about what it is if you're considering the approved plans.
Speaking of that, how much more time do we have?
Twenty-fifth.
Dodge, you know, to make a decision, file it.
Twenty-fifth.
You have forty days from the day of the close of the public hearing, so whatever, wherever we are on that.
We're at thirty, right?
The end of July, I believe.
Where's the drop down?
Hearing was closed last-
Yes.
Wait, actually, the, the next meeting will be thirty.
So I don't know, again, the time dates, when do we have to issue this by? When you said we have more time to review it.
July thirtieth.
July thirtieth.
July thirtieth.
For the voting members, what is the, what's your position? For the five voting members, what is the current, what is your current feelings about?
I would like to look at the-
I think we've got to the point where at least we're comfortable with the findings and the conditions.
You sent one the other day, and that's the first time I've seen it. This is my plans I've been going-
Whether or not we're willing to do it until we see the actual final document, that is my question.
I agree with Frank, and I'm assuming, how soon could you get, if we agree to this with the comments made, how soon can we get that, we view it?
I would want to confer with Noreen on it, just so we can compare notes, but as soon as she can get together with me, I can, Monday, I mean, a quick turnaround. I would want to work on it with Noreen as soon as possible, while it's fresh in my mind.
Yeah.
And then get you the new draft back, so if Noreen can do it, I can have it back by Monday.
I guess I'm comfortable with approving subject two, getting a final document in front of us. Did I say that right?
Yeah, but I think Suzanne felt more comfortable if she could look at the, what you're considering to be the approved plans.
I felt, I would like to see the final document myself, given the fact that we have a, perhaps a possible five-day wiggle room in there.
Me too.
Then what I would recommend, it's up to you, Mr. Chair, is you put another deliberation session on. We get, Noreen and I get you the final decision, you know, quick turnaround by Monday. Board members have a chance in the meantime to make sure you're comfortable with what's identified as the approved plans, then you're good to go.
So we're looking to, continues to seven twenty-five, is that the date?
Yeah.
July twenty-fifth, right.
Maybe commit at like five thirty, maybe? Something like that, because don't we have hearings, like regular hearings? So what about if we commit at like five thirty? Too much for you?
We can amend the agenda right up to forty-eight hours, so we can amend.
Everyone available on the twenty-fifth, if we start at five thirty?
I am.
Yeah, I am.
Whatever you say.
Yeah. I have it held as placeholder for film of-
Oh, good.
Yeah, we already have a placeholder of whatever we, we did allow for this.
Yeah, that's, is that okay with you guys?
Alright, so, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to have another deliberation on July twenty-fifth at five thirty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, call vote, please.
Batamasa.
Gavi, aye.
Fineran, aye. Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye.
It's the best way of doing it, then you know exactly what you're voting on, you do it that night, you've done it.
More comfortable, yeah.
So we continue for further deliberation with a vote anticipated July twenty-five, five thirty PM here at-
We getting overtime?
Absolutely.
Two times zero.
We're going to get rich off for all our overtime.
We do have a couple of quick things on open meeting that's on tonight's agenda. We'll be tabling our minutes. Do we have a zoning administrator update? No update. Don't think we need anything under board discussion, however, under board updates, originally, this will be, this hearing, not this particular date, since it's continued, Jerry Timms' last zoning hearing that he'll be continuing on. I'll just put on the record that Jerry joined the ZBA in June of twenty sixteen, and we'll thank him for eight years of service. Little refreshment and a card for you, Jerry, so don't bolt out of the building. Future agenda items, since we're obligated under our bylaws, one of the last things we'll be doing, there will be board reorganization after we conclude this matter and our regular hearings that night, so that will be coming up next week. Anything else from the board?
Nice job tonight, Jerry.
Yeah, you did great.
So, next scheduled meeting, July twenty-fifth, five thirty PM at the Selectman's Meeting Room, we'll have the agenda updated. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all.